Okay, board members have copy of the amended agenda in front of them. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Dick. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the agenda motions approved. We'll next move on to the approval of the December 11th, 2007 Regular Enclosed Session Board of Education Meeting Minutes. entertain a motion for approval of the minutes?
So move.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Next, we'll move on to item number five. Holiday contributions to the community from Hudson Schools. Mary?
I am very happy to share with you information about what our schools have been doing over the holidays to support, as service projects, to support our community, people in our community. And we wanted to take the time to recognize these efforts. And I'm going to go through a list, but I want to let you know I don't believe this list is complete, even though it's quite extensive. At EP Rock, they sponsored eight families through Operation Help. They adopted six EP Rock families in need. The third grade collected $441 for four families who have a parent in a facility, a correctional facility at the high school, but this is also district-wide. A lot of this came from the high school, or a portion of it came from the high school, but some came from every school. County Market Stuff-a-Truck Food Drive for the local food shelf collected 26,000 pounds of food. And students were bell ringers for the Salvation Army, covering evening shifts from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. At Holton, they adopted two families through social services. Students and families contributed toys to cheers for children for the Children's Cancer Clinic in St. Paul. And each class created and donated a fleece slap blanket for children in wheelchairs at Children's Hospital. At Hudson Prairie, they collected coats and winter clothing for Operation Help. They collected items for the 10th grade annual giving tree for families living in shelters, including, by grade level, kindergarten students contributed toys, first grade students contributed blankets, second grade students contributed baby items, third grade students contributed hats and mittens, fourth grade books, and fifth grade hygiene and paper products. The Student Council sponsored a fundraiser for phone cards for military personnel stationed in Afghanistan. At the middle school, their Kids Who Care Club raised $5,000 for Operation Help families. At North Hudson, they collected toys for tots for North Hudson families with a total of 10 children. First grade students raised $362 to provide groceries for two of their families. Third grade students collected 100 rolls of wrapping paper, and several packages of tape and ribbons were toward donated to Operation Help. At Willow River, they raised money and collected gifts for four of their families with a total of 14 children. And the Administrative Service Center Office collected $400 in monetary donations, gift cards, and gifts for a family staying in the Ronald McDonald House, whose son was undergoing a treatment. And certainly, this speaks to the quality that we have as a value of service in our community, and certainly models for our students and our community, our students' efforts to help support each and every family that lives here.
Thank you, Mary. We'll continue with your superintendent's report.
Candidates for the spring election.
Thank you. We have five candidates for the spring election. I'm going to read them in alphabetical order, and we will select the order that they will be on the ballot on February 22nd. So Erica Sherrier, incumbent from our board, will be running. Philip Katuski, Lynn Robson, Dan Chernahoy from our board, and Barb Van Lunen. So those are the five candidates for the election on April 1st. Because there are three seats, there will be no primary election. So the election will be on April 1st, and we encourage everyone to get out and vote. And next, boundary exception period. Based on the board making a decision about boundaries this evening, we will open a boundary exception process. Requests by parents can file requests for boundary exceptions starting tomorrow and running through February 1st. Our goal is for our current parents to have the first priority in any seats that are available in our schools through the boundary exception process. And Nancy's going to speak to that in some more information later on. And we wanted to make sure that we completed that process prior to the open enrollment process that is also starting soon. And the open enrollment process, and this is a process required by law, by our state, and that is for students who live outside our district to make requests to come into the district. So once again, we wanted to make sure that our elementary students, through this boundary exception process, and their families, had the opportunity to make their requests first and have those acted upon before we move into decisions for the open enrollment process for out-of-district students that starts February 4th through the 22nd. And you will be taking action on those open enrollment requests in March. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mary. From there, we'll move on to topics for action. The first item is the 2008-09 elementary attendance boundaries. Last evening, we had a listening session for the board at Willow River, which was a very good and productive session, both, I think, for the community as well as for board members. And Nancy is going to speak to that issue and address some of the questions that came up at the session last night, that the board had questions about. So if you want to cover that, please, Nancy.
On December 11th, the Board of Education heard a report in person from the Edulog consultant hired to redraw our elementary school boundaries. A boundary proposal was provided, and since then, we've had five open house informational events attended by parents. And last night, as Mr. Chernahoy said, we had a listening session for the board to hear from parents. The boundary map shared with the board and parents who attended the listening session last night, which is also on our district website, has changed as a result of the continuing work of our consultant, parent feedback, and other new information since December 11th. Has not changed since last evening, however. The considerations that have been included in the process were elementary class-size guidelines, school space and capacities, providing space for future growth, transportation, staffing efficiency, neighborhood boundaries, and to the extent possible, consideration of socioeconomic, as reflected through free and reduced lunch status, and also a balance, again, to the extent possible, of the students receiving English as a second language services. New on our website today is the map of the revised proposal for the attendance boundaries. We've also included on our website a written document, written comments from Edulog, the outside consulting service, and we've also provided some written material from our local Last night, in response to what the Board of Education heard and the administration heard, the board asked the administration to do some further work and provide some additional information regarding minimizing the number of students moved. You know, how was that addressed? How was the minimizing the distance of students to school rationale for the planning for future growth? And the board requested specific information regarding an area of the district referred to as Tanny West on the map, and also the Carriage Lane area. The board also asked the administration to provide some additional information on the impact of delaying the decision, and there were also questions about the boundary exception process and what those criteria would be. The current, relative to minimizing student movement, this is data presented also last evening, but framed a little differently, but the data's the same. The current proposal supported minimizing student movement. Two-thirds of our students have not moved at all. They will continue attending the same school they're attending today. The remaining, approximately one-third, over 450 of those students will be attending Rivercrest. That's a given. That's what drove the changing of the boundaries to begin with. So approximately 450, and actually over that number, will be attending the new school. The next three populations of students are really displaced populations. There's 80 students, nearly 80 students, who live south of I-94, who five years ago were moved as a combined community to North Hudson because there was not room for them to continue attending EP Rock Elementary. Another population that's been displaced has been a result of our short-term plan to address our growing elementary population, and that has impacted currently over 90 students. There are over 90 students right now who have moved to Hudson recently, who have gone to register at the school in their attendance area and found that those grade levels were capped, and they now have been put on buses to attend schools throughout the district. So they've been displaced throughout our Hudson School District. Additionally, there's over 50 ESL students who reside in attendance areas other than the school they attend, and that's primarily because it's the only place we had space for the program. And so those are really populations that were, what I refer to as displaced, and certainly, you know, glad to be closer to home at this point. So when it comes down to it, fewer than 130 students were moved to balance enrollments to address all the other criteria that the board directed the consultant to consider. Minimizing the distance travel, the current proposal does that in a couple of ways. One is that all students within one mile, and that's per our Hudson Board of Education policy, that are able to safely walk to school have remained in their current school. We overlooked a few of those students in the first proposed boundary map, but through parent feedback, found them and have made that adjustment. And secondly, thinking of and looking at the map and realizing where our schools are located, they're primarily located north to south along the western boundary of our school district. So it necessitates, it necessitates traveling from the west and into the schools which are located north to south. And the consultant, along with our transportation office, looked at the most efficient and the most timely way to move those students to their school in no more than one hour each way. Planning for future growth, another criteria, the proposal sought a long-term, a long-term solution. We really don't, I've said, I think, last time, we don't have the crystal ball, and even the experts don't either. But we have hoped for and planned for a longer solution versus a short-term solution. And the only way to provide for that really is to plan for future growth. Our estimation of that was based on current building permits and areas that have been plotted for development. We've had, my office has had multiple input from the city of Hudson, the village of North Hudson, township of Hudson, St. Croix County planners. The, all of, all of the planners, the city and county particularly agreed that, you know, growth is evident, you know, in all of our areas of our district. But if they were to predict where it might occur first, and there is a downturn, an economic downturn, they all talk about that, again, not knowing when that might improve. But if it did, they all identify the town of Hudson as perhaps the first to be affected, perhaps Troy, and then St. Joseph Township next, for a variety of reasons. Some of it has to do with how the land is zoned, how it is speculated upon, a whole variety of reasons. But it was something that I heard that was consistent between different experts in the field. We have received some preliminary demographic research, and the board will hear later, in a month or so, about population projections, K-12. But the part of that that was important to this project had to do with yield, K-5 yield per household. And some of that material has gone into the proposal as well. The greatest yield per single-family and townhome happened, again, according to the demographer, happens to lay in the Hudson Prairie attendance area. The last thing we want to do, again, just underscoring a long-term plan versus a short-term plan, it's a very complicated process. It's upsetting to many people, certainly families, children, even internally within the system. And the last thing that we want to do is to be back here anytime soon, redrawing these boundaries. So that's why we feel planning for that growth is so important. The next, the next area the board asked us to look at, asked through the consultant, who did some refiguring, if, if the Tanny West area, which has about 53, a little more than 53 students, or about 53, I have the exact number here, but it's around that number, what would that impact be if that, if that particular neighborhood was moved? And actually, they go to Prairie now, so what would happen if they went back to Prairie? Because they're not currently proposed to be there. The current proposal for Prairie has a total of 449 students and would require 20 teachers, which would leave about 24% space for growth. If Tanny West neighborhood were included, then there would be 502 students, the capacity of the building's 588. Looking at our class-size guidelines and living within those guidelines, we would need 24 teachers, and we would have then 15% of that particular school building left for new students. The impact of removing this neighborhood, which is proposed to be part of the Holton school community, right now, with this neighborhood included in Holton, there would be 248 students. We would require 12 teachers. We would have 15% growth rate. And remember, you know, anyone just needs to look at the map, and you can see all of the area of potential development, but that area is proposed to be, it's a little more complicated perhaps later than the others. And the Holton facility is one that we could propose to our community to add on to if we had to, and we'd have some time to do that. So then, if we took the Tanny West neighborhood out, we'd have 195 students, K-5. Right now, we've got 216. We would still propose 12 teachers, you still have to have two sections. There'd be over a third of the facility left for, for growth. The, just speaking a little bit more to the number of teachers, the, with the current proposal, the, the average class size per grade level, the range is, is more comparable to our other buildings with the proposal, the administration's proposal, than it is with the, with removing the Tanny West neighborhood. Four of the five grade levels drop down below our district's class-size guidelines and fall in 14, 15, 16 range. So it's quite, it's inefficient for certain overall use of the building, and also of the teacher-to-student ratio is inequitable. The, we did look, and the board asked us to look at, and the consultant to look at, placing the Tanny West neighborhood in Willow. Some of the adjacent areas that currently attend Hudson Prairie are planned and proposed for Willow, and so we looked at Willow. But just by placing them there, we immediately go over the capacity of that building. We didn't analyze it any further because we, we over-enrolled the building by putting that neighborhood there. The other area that the board specifically asked us to look at was the Carriage Lane neighborhood, which lies south of I-94, is currently part of EP Rock. And the administration, we looked at it, doesn't require any additional teachers to do it either way, because there's about 16 students affected there, K-5. The rationale for keeping this, this particular neighborhood to EP Rock in the map, it, we're not, they're not experiencing a boundary change if it's maintained. There are, in fact, 146 students south of I-94 that would also stay at Rock. These are, again, south of 94. So there are other students that would be at Rock as well. It's not, you know, an isolated neighborhood from others south, at least, of I-94. It, it goes to the, the interests of minimizing the number of students impacted by the change. Those students are reflected, are not, now reflected in, in the change, because there has been no change, and then would be, be added to those numbers that, that, that would be reflected in a change because of balance and et cetera. Students would continue to be with friends in a familiar school, at least some of them. We have not heard, the district has not heard, from a majority of the parents expressing concern, and there have been school officials who have heard just verbally from parents in that area who are happy and would like to stay at Rock. The space, you know, right next to the Carriage Lane neighborhood is Red Cedar Canyon, and it's been suggested to perhaps put that neighborhood back into Rock, or carry both of them forward to, into Rivercrest. But if you look at the information from the city planner, you'll see that there are, there are 236 building permits for dwelling units in the Red Cedar Canyon. It just isn't possible to take that Red Cedar Canyon neighborhood and locate it at Rock. Going on, you asked financial impact, and the proposal that, the administration proposes would add four new classroom teachers, using our existing K-5 teachers, but adding four new teachers. And our financial services director estimates the average new teacher salary and benefits to be approximately $57,530 times four. So the new cost would be $230,120. Now, that includes, you know, the opening of Rivercrest, and it includes all of the, you know, balancing and moving through the district. So that's what the current proposed map represents. The restoring the Tanny West to Hudson Prairie, it would be an additional four more teachers, and you can see the additional cost associated with that. And not recommended, but we did show you the cost of assigning that neighborhood to Willow. There would be no additional teachers needed to assign the Carriage Lane area to Rivercrest. Impact of delaying the decision, there are kind of categories of impact. If, if the decision is not made this evening, and, and there is some delay beyond January, we have a specific timeline associated with the transfer and reassignment of our staff. We have a need to advertise and recruit, you know, the very best people from outside the system for those new positions. We would, we would delay the boundary exception timeline, because our parents wouldn't really know, you know, exactly whether they needed to apply or not. The, there is anxiety right now, and you've heard quite a bit of it already, students, parents, and also staff, and that would be prolonged. And we have plans, lots of plans, developing for this transition and for the school community building, and we wouldn't be engaging in those activities. building, and we wouldn't be engaging in those activities. Lastly, there was a question from the board about the boundary exception process and criteria. We began distributing forms even last night. We've proposed to maintain, you know, the same criteria as the boundary development, look class sizes. We're going to look at building space and enrollment. We plan to allow some space for growth, and we would not be adding staff in order to honor the boundary exceptions. And additionally, students currently attending a school requested will be given priority. So if there's a student who's in fourth grade now, let's say at Hudson Prairie, proposed to go to Willow River, that parent makes a boundary exception request to stay at Prairie another year, and someone who's never attended Hudson Prairie makes the same request as a fifth grader, the students who's currently at Hudson Prairie would be given priority. This process would be, these decisions would be made by the elementary principal team, which I would facilitate. So that concludes my comments unless Mary would like to comment further.
I thought that was a very good, thorough recap of some of the items that were brought up last night and certainly the questions that I had from last night were addressed with that report, so I do appreciate it. Mary?
We have been working since our meeting last night and certainly compliments to Nancy and to Tracy Havishaleen for putting this information together. There were a couple of things that we've talked about that didn't quite make the list, but I think have some importance and should be considered in your deliberation. And it has to do with Tanne West and reassigning that to Hudson Prairie from the proposal. One of the things as we talked about was additional four teachers. So that doubles the cost of the kindergarten through fifth grade teaching staff. We have concerns about where that, those dollars might come from and the potential to reduce other K-12 staffing potential that we have and requests that will be made from particularly our middle school and high school. There will be also other requests from our elementary schools that are not classroom teacher-directed, but that extra two hundred and thirty thousand will be coming out of the staffing dollars. And right now, we're not sure how many dollars we're going to have. So we don't know the extent of our potential to meet requests as they come in, other requests. So that's a concern of ours. Secondly, looking at Hudson Prairie and having less space at Hudson Prairie. When we considered the boundaries in the proposal as is, we have told you the criteria that was used, and what I'm going to talk about now was not used in the criteria at all. It was, and I want to emphasize that, it was not used as we developed these boundaries. But as we look to the future, we are in the process of starting, and we're just very initially, starting to talk about short-term solutions for the middle school. One of the options that exists for us on a short-term basis is to use space in Hudson Prairie. With that space reserved for growth is the reason it's there in Hudson Prairie. We believe that that could become a good solution for short-term for the middle school, which we know is beyond its capacity currently. And as we look at the incoming fifth grade class going into sixth grade, we're concerned about additional growth. And so it does allow us for a short period of time, while we don't have that growth at Hudson Prairie, to be able to consider that space as one of the options for relief at the middle school. And certainly that is high up on the list of consideration. There are other options on the list, and again, just preliminary conversations, and I just want to throw that into the mix as you deliberate and move forward.
Thank you, Mary. We do have some requests to speak from the audience, but before we do that, I'd like to, while it's fresh in our minds, do any board members have any questions for either Nancy or Mary?
I do.
Okay. Cindy?
Actually, I have quite a few questions. On page four of the PowerPoint that we just saw, we talk about transportation and in the first bullet point, students being within a mile, being able to stay in their current school. And I heard a lot of parents last night saying that they were a half mile to a mile from Prairie and were being bused now to Holton. So I'm wondering how that, how we reconcile those two pieces of information. That's the first thing. Do you want me to ask all these questions or one at a time?
Well, I can respond real quickly.
Why don't we do one at a time?
I can respond real quickly to that. There is a difference, you know, it's, we've also heard from parents who can see the school or if they walked across the field in good weather, you know, would be within the one-mile limit. Others who would have to cross a hazardous highway or street deemed by the state to be thus and would require us to transport them. So I think that's what they're talking about, but of course, we'd certainly want to hear from those that are legitimately walking safely within a mile to their school. Haven't heard from anyone directly about that. We've checked into several. We've even gone and looked at it, and we made some corrections that affected several students between Rock and Willow, but haven't heard directly about any others that would qualify in that way.
Okay. So what I heard you saying is that the definition of safely walk to school is in part determined by how the state evaluates the walkways and existing roadways?
That's right.
Okay. So it might, okay. On page six of the PowerPoint, at the bottom of that, we're talking about the space at EP Rock not allowing for the Red Cedar Canyon neighborhoods to move to EP Rock. And I'm wondering why that is, or how that is related to the Carriage Lane request? Because my understanding is that Carriage Lane is not in the Red Cedar Canyon, or am I wrong about that?
Well, they're next to it, and when they spoke to the board last night, they believe they are, that they are part of that neighborhood. They regard themselves as part of that neighborhood and suggested that they both should stay together.
Okay. My understanding was that the Red Cedar Canyon was going to the Rivercrest and that Carriage Lane was going to EP Rock?
That's correct.
And if they are one neighborhood, then Carriage Lane, why is it difficult for Carriage Lane to go to the new school because Red Cedar Canyon's not being asked to go to EP Rock? They're not asking for that. You know what I'm saying?
No, they're not. No, Red Cedar Canyon is not asking to go to Rock.
So the point about moving the whole Red Cedar Canyon neighborhood back to EP Rock is not, is just a point, right?
It is.
Okay. So the question still is whether Carriage Lane is part of Red Cedar Canyon, and if it is, then it should go with Red Cedar Canyon, right?
Well, when we look at the location of Carriage Lane and Red Cedar Canyon, they are in different places.
Okay.
But I think some of the comments last night from those from Carriage Lane said that, you know, they're kind of next to the industrial park and across from that is Red Cedar Canyon.
Right, okay. All right. So we're not even talking about moving Red Cedar Canyon to EP Rock? That's not even, okay. Now, about the exemptions for families, and you talked on the last page here about the decision-making criteria. Will we be exempting families in this process or will we be exempting individual students?
The requests are made for individual students, and all along, we've indicated in our information meetings and also in our questions and answers that there really is no guarantee. It's a student-by-student request. But in talking with the principals, we'll be, if a parent makes a request for three children in the family, they're going to be stapling those together, and we'll do the best we can to keep siblings together. But we would not assure that at the, and add teachers to do it.
Would the exemption be for all of the elementary years of that student or would they have to reapply every year?
Again, we've addressed that in our Q and A because we've had that question a number of times, and we are, we can't, you never can promise, you never can guarantee. But it's certainly much more possible, again, if a long-range solution were adopted, that we could adhere to that, where they could remain in their schools. Unforeseen, you know, things could come up that could interfere with that. It's totally improbable right now. But with the balancing of enrollment, with the space for growth, it seems possible that a child exempted today could finish their elementary experience in the same school. It seems possible.
And we have tried to do that in the past where possible.
Okay, well, a comment and then two more questions and then I'll be done with this. The comment that I have to make is that I cannot support an exemption policy at all that does not exempt families so that we, that parents can know that their kids will all be in the same school. And I cannot support an exemption policy that doesn't let that kid stay in the school until they're done. I just can't. So if this policy or if this criteria is tied to the boundary exception, or to the boundary, I will vote no because I can't support this piece. The second thing that I want to do then is ask one of my last two questions, and that is, what are the, the residents last night of the Tanne Lane asked what their legal options are for appeal. They also asked what their, you know, non-formal or informal options are for appeal of the board's decision about boundaries. And while certainly the exemption process is one piece of that, do they have any other options? And then the other question that I have has to do with Tom's suggestion last night that we examine splitting that infamous yellow box and sending half to one district and half to the other and none of them to Holton, and I haven't seen anything about that in this presentation. So those are the two remaining questions.
Well, I can hit part of it, and Nancy, you fill in. Going back to the exemption process, Cindy, I think that keeping the families together, I believe occurs. It may not occur exactly like you're anticipating, so let me explain it and then see if this fits with what you're thinking. So if I was making a request and I asked for a second grader and a fifth grader, and we had room for the fifth grader without adding teachers, but we didn't have room for the second grader, we would let the parents know that, and we would say it's your choice. So you can choose to split up. And we have heard from parents who want to make that choice, particularly for fifth graders. And so we let them choose at that point. We also try to meet the requests for that second and fifth grader, but we have, you know, committed to not adding additional staff at a building on boundary requests, and we would be exceeding our class size guidelines when we say no. So that's how it plays out. And again, some families have told us that they, instead of us saying no for both the second and the fifth grader because we can't meet their request, we allow them to make that choice. So I don't know if that helps any, but that's how it plays out.
And what about the life of the student's elementary career or the family's elementary career?
Well, I'm going to, Nancy, do you have a comment on that one?
I don't think I can comment any further than I did. We certainly think it's more possible now because of the space available in our facilities and in our grade levels, but...
Let me just talk about how that plays out as well, or at least how I've seen it in the cases that I've been involved in, and I can't say every single solitary one. I can just say the ones that I have been involved. You know, our principals really work on these decisions and they work in tandem together. So the school that is their attendance boundary, school principal, and the school where the parents are requesting that the student go, those two principals talk together about space available, the students moving and so forth, and what's in the best interest of the child and the parent request, the reason for the request and so forth. And they try to meet those requests. I mean, they want to help students and they want to keep them in their schools. They're very possessive, well, I don't know if possessive is the right word, but they certainly care about those students and their education and want to keep them there, and that is what I've seen happen. Our requests up to this point, because we haven't had room, the letters that we had changed over the years have said it is a one-year approval and that they have to ask again. Now, we could look at that, we have space, but once again, we don't know what the future holds. So if we would have that situation, that's where we are right now.
I just think that's horrendous. I think that's horrendous for a family who has three kids and will have an elementary time. Maybe they've got a fourth grader and a second grader and a four-year-old. And, you know, their fourth grader will get to the middle school, they'll have a kid in that school, they don't know if they're going to stay there their whole career, they don't know if they're going to be moved again, they've got another one coming up in kindergarten or first grade. They've, I mean, that's, I think that's horrendous for a family to have to ask every year for an exemption after we've sort of started the process of letting them in. When we let a student who has been attending this district complete their high school education in this district because they've, you know, moved outside the boundary, we allowed them to complete it and their whole time there. And I just, I find it very unfortunate that we would put elementary school families in a position where they wouldn't know from year to year whether or not all their kids are going to be in the same building or whether they're, you know, going to be subject to some random kind of movement.
If I could just add to that just a little bit here, we are talking, we are actually not planning to have them reapply every year. They do now because of our enrollment problems, but we are not planning to have them reapply every year. The issue with the open enrollment out-of-district students too needs to be clarified because when they apply the first time, they're approved on space available, and of course, we must consider out-of-district students by law. If we have space anywhere, we must accept them. But we also are, they also are required to apply one more time, and that is when they move to another, another level of education. So if they enter at elementary, they must apply before they enter middle, and we apply the same criteria, space available.
Cindy, I think you bring up a really good point. It is our goal as an administration to have a higher priority for our families that are here as opposed to those that are outside our district. And so what I would ask the board is, at this point, we can have them continue throughout and continue and finish at that school. But I would also ask the board, if we get to the point where out of space at Hudson Prairie or EP Rock or at Rivercrest, that would, we would reexamine that and maybe make it one year as well, but at least reexamine that at that time.
For these families who are involved in the redistricting right now, I would, I would accept that as a compromise, that we would, if they are granted an exemption, it's for the entire elementary career of the student or the family. I would prefer the family, but I'll leave that up to you. And that at some later time, if it becomes an issue, we'll revisit it.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
Just the question about the appeals and about the splitting of the two, of the area.
Nancy, do you have the answer to the appeals question?
Yeah, I do. We did talk with legal counsel, and they know of no regulatory or statutory basis for appealing, you know, boundary decisions of Board of Education. There is a, through the judicial system, there isn't a statutory or regulatory process there for review. process there for review. Department of Public Instruction has this extremely broad complaint receipt ability, but they too must have, there must be a legal basis. In other words, the Board of Education must have done something legally, legally wrong before the department would, would consider a complaint.
Okay. Thanks Nancy.
And the other, the other question you have too, we, we did, we actually did look at it. And we looked at it first, you know, kind of, you have to, physically, you have to kind of physically look at it and you've got to look at the map and look at how the roads are drawn and then, and then how the kids are distributed. It just, it just didn't look feasible to us. I mean, if there was, you know, additional want us to look at it further, but it didn't, it didn't look like it would work functionally. But we certainly remembered that request and at, at first thought it might have some merit of part of the kids going to Hudson Prairie and the other part, and especially if you could do it continuously. It just didn't work out by grade level, it didn't work out functionally, didn't work out.
And I called and talked to Tom about this because it was, it was his request. And so I explained a few things, you know, there, we're not aware of any other neighborhood because it was one of our criteria to keep neighborhoods together. And so we would be changing our criteria and guidelines to split this neighborhood. That concerned us. Then we also looked at transportation. And when we look at the whole area of Tanny West in relationship to transportation, our assumption right now, our planning right now is that we will take a bus in there and would take it to Holton. And it would either be less time for the longest student on that bus than it is currently to Hudson Prairie, or it will be the same amount of time. If we had to take two different buses going two different ways into that area, it would be very inefficient for us. And we believe it would extend students' bus rides as well. So we felt that based on that kind of information, we talked to Tom and did the Willow River, looking at taking the entire population of Tanny West to Willow River, and that's why we pursued that instead.
Okay. Thanks, thanks Mary. Thanks Nancy.
Thanks.
I think at this point in time, I'm going to go to the citizens' request to speak. We can come back to some more of the board questions after that. But the first one is Tim Minor wishes to speak to the elementary attendance boundary. So Tim, if you could come to the microphone, give us your name, your location and...
Good evening. As you said, my name is Tim Minor. I live with my wife Ellen and our two children on Old Mill Road in beautiful downtown Burkhardt. Our son is a second grader at Holton Elementary School and we also have a three-year-old daughter. I'm a parent who's an enthusiastic supporter of Holton Elementary School, but I'm also a supporter of the entire school district. And with regards to the new boundaries for Holton Elementary School, I support the plan as presented by the administration because I feel it best serves the needs of the district and will keep all of our schools equally strong. The opening of Rivercrest Elementary School next fall presents the district with an opportunity to balance enrollment throughout this district and ensure that all students receive the highest quality education available. We all know that the district must work within a budget and utilize the available resources to meet the needs of all the children, all the children. These resources include staff, parents, and infrastructure. Underutilization of any of these resources in one school and overutilization in another is a bad situation for everyone involved. And while I'm a fan of small class sizes and they have been shown to significantly benefit students in learning, there is such a problem as too small if it results in class contraction. And while there is no current plan to contract, within just the past 10 years, the school district faced a similar situation at Holton and the decision was made to combine or contract classes in a multi-age format with one teacher preparing lessons for both third and fourth graders. And while it's been proven at Hudson Prairie that multi-age classes can work in a school with a long-term plan to cover two years of curriculum over a two-year period, simply combining classes for one year means that significant portions of the curriculum will be left out. And in this age of accountability and the need to show adequate yearly progress for each student, combining grades as a Band-Aid approach to undersized classes would not improve education quality. The district and the board have established both class sizes and school size parameters based on sound education philosophy and hands-on inspection of the existing facilities. These guidelines reinforce the ideas that teachers work best in an environment where their energies are focused on students and learning. Schools with two or more sections per grade allow teachers to collaborate with their colleagues and search out alternative solutions within the building. Furthermore, as the district attempts to attract the best and the brightest teachers, it is easy to see how a prospective teacher would choose a school with the consistent attendance, with consistent attendance and staffing levels over a school or district that may fluctuate from year to year. Please balance the enrollment across the district and ensure that all of the available resources, both human and infrastructure, are utilized in the best possible manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We'll move on to the next one. Sue Helmers. And I'll just mention that we ask that all the speakers try to stay within the three to five-minute range if possible. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue Helmers and I represent the Holton Elementary Parent Association as the co-president. As a school community, we look forward to and welcome any new students and families to the Holton community as we see this as a wonderful opportunity to grow and expand. With this in mind, we support the proposed boundaries. The Holton community has been assured over the years that boundaries would be looked at and that Holton would see an increase in enrollment that would be necessary to guarantee the long-term continuation of the programs, staffing, and resources that are currently in place. Without additional growth, these items may be compromised. When a building such as Holton is under-enrolled, this negatively affects the entire school by potentially reducing the number of sections per grade level and/or creating combination classrooms, therefore lessening opportunities for professional collaboration and reducing the amount of hours for academic assistant support staff and specialist programming. While Holton has benefited from small class sizes over the years, it is a concern that this will eventually become a disadvantage. Losing staff and resources has been an ongoing concern for the parents of Holton, but it has been the belief that equity would be, would be established when the boundary changes for the new school were made. It is with the best interests of students and staff at Holton in mind to work to establish classroom and school-wide equity in order to best serve all the students of the Hudson School District. I strongly urge you to add additional students to Holton Elementary at a time when changes are already occurring across the district in order to maintain the educational integrity to both Holton and the entire Hudson School District. I represent Holton Elementary's best interests when I ask the board to ensure that Holton maintains the enrollment necessary to adequately use its potential space and resources, which ultimately ensures a high quality of education to each and every student. And that is our most important goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. We'll move on to Linda Hanch.
Oh gosh, sorry. I'm Linda Hanch, 49 East Canyon Drive. My children currently attend Rock and we do live south of the highway. Since the referendum passed a year ago, our development has, we've kind of fallen into that area where we didn't know whether or not we were going to go to Rock or to Rivercrest. And so for a year, our family has been waiting and wondering where we would go to school in the fall of 2008. I asked the board tonight to vote yes to the, to the proposed boundaries so our family can have closure and we all as a community can begin to move on.
Thank you. Betsy Lundine.
Hello, my name is Betsy Lundine. I live at 676 Cottage Lane and I'm in the Carriage Cottage area. And I apologize I missed the listening session last night, but there were a couple of questions that I thought were going to be answered tonight that weren't. And one of them was in regard to an indirect influence. And I'd like that answered. And I, I just have a couple of things on the rationale list that to me don't, I respectfully disagree with it. One brought up about the buses. In our neighborhood of about nine children that are separated from everyone else in our quadrant or vicinity, there will be buses going on Handley and Stage Line and crossing. Like you said, was something desirable to avoid. I wasn't particular which school we ended up with, but I wanted to be with the people in our vicinity. And to me, the map is a little misleading because aside from our neighborhood, what we're by is the largest commercial district and the industrial park. And we're at least a mile from the next closest neighborhood for our children going. Also, I guess I'm not good at gauging time here, but, and the majority of parents that have not expressed concern, I was the second house that moved in there. I've lived there, well, on Stage Line my whole life. I've lived in Carriage, second house built. And I haven't talked to anyone that would meet that criteria, a majority requesting to stay at EP Rock. So I, I have to question that. And like somebody mentioned earlier, if you drive around an area and take a look at it, it really doesn't make sense why we were portioned off the way we were. And maybe you can clear it up other than just with the sheet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris, please, Mary.
Hi, remember me? Hopefully a few people listened last night, but apparently some others didn't. I'm in the same neighborhood as Betsy. Our kids go to EP Rock. And some of the rationales again that were given for this decision, first of all, that all other houses south of 94, we talked about what, 140 or 160 children, south of 94 will still be going to EP Rock. Those children are also on the other side of Carmichael, the west side of Carmichael, and then farther beyond that among retail and other industrial outlets. So we have no association with this. And as Betsy mentioned, can I lift that? That there is about a mile before you even get to any of those homes. So we have no association with that neighborhood. We are right next to Red Cedar Canyon. Technically, are we part of Red Cedar Canyon? No. But there's other homes up there too that are not technically part of Red Cedar Canyon. Betsy mentioned the buses. This violates one of your guidelines for decisions. You got two, an extra bus coming up there, crossing the path of another one to pick up nine students to go back the other way. That makes no sense. As far as using indirect comments to make decisions, how can you do that? You say, and somebody said that they happened to say that they might like going to EP Rock or maybe a teacher said, geez, do you want to stay here? What are you going to say to that teacher? Oh, no, I don't like this school. I want to go to a different one. So politely they say, yeah, I love it. I wouldn't mind staying here. That's an indirect comment. 100% of the written comments were for moving. Again, it's not the school, it's the being disassociated with our neighborhood. That's what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Ellen Farrell.
Hi, thank you. I spoke last night. I'm Ellen Farrell. I have a daughter that attends Prairie and a preschool-aged child that will attend elementary school in two years. I just had a couple of follow-up questions based on some of the questions I heard the board asked of the administration last night that I don't think have yet been talked about. And then I had a couple of questions about some of the comments that were made. One of the gentlemen on the board asked a question regarding the presentation that Nancy gave, Tanny West impact on Hudson Prairie. Current proposal percent space for growth, 24%. With Tanny West put back to Prairie, that's 15%. Someone asked, how many years does that equate to? That they would feel more comfortable to put Prairie back or our neighborhood back to Prairie based on how many years is it going to take based on recent projections? You look at growth that's happened in the last five years versus growth that's happened in the last 18 months. It's quite a bit different. So I'd like to know, how many years does that give us continued space at Prairie before we're at capacity? Because I think that's a critical factor in making the decision whether to put that back to Prairie. Another comment the board made last night was on, was parent transportation considered? And should that be considered? Part of what makes a great school is parent involvement. And as all of us said, we have heard great things about Holton. We don't have a concern about the quality of education or going to that school. But with the logistical issues that we have, it would be very limiting for us to be involved in our child's school, whether it's going to lunches, assisting teachers, junior achievement. Being a part, having a school in your community is very important. And that was brought up by the board. Parent transportation relates directly to parent involvement. The other question I had, did you consider rearranging some of the other boundaries? For instance, it's hard to see, but you have this blue square here. Could this be moved to EP Rock where it has 20% room for growth? And that would still be attending a community school. Does that leave room for our neighborhood to, to attend a community school? And finally, the last question I have, and I don't really understand it, is adding four teachers to Prairie for an additional 53 kids? I don't understand the math. If someone could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to Sue Chelstrom.
Good evening and thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm really not too prepared to speak tonight. I had a very optimistic feeling when I left last night as far as our area. I too am part of the area that is proposed to go to Holton. And I would have to agree with all the comments that Ellen just made, especially the parent participation part of it. I was a stay-at-home mom for seven years, just recently returned to work. And being involved in my kid's school is very important to me. And I would say that it would be impossible for me to keep the job that I currently have, that I enjoy at the high school and still be able to go up and help out and be involved in my kid's school when it's that far away. And I did just start a job at the high school, which I really do like, working with kids with disabilities, and I would love to be able to keep that. But it would be more important for me to be part of my, my kid's school and I would need to adjust my work to be able to do that. Also, I guess I just, you know, I'm, I'm not really a numbers person as far as dollars and all that, but when we look at the cost of adding the four additional teachers, which I also would like to know why four would be necessary, I, you know, $480,000 or $460,000, that's a ton of money. However, what is that percentage compared to how much it's costing to build the new school that we all voted for, that we'll be paying for with our tax money in addition to the additional expenses that we're going to have to travel this distance to, to be able to be involved with the school up at Holton? And I also do want to add that I've heard Holton is a wonderful school. I personally know a couple of teachers up there. If you could move that school closer to us, you know, I'd be more than happy to move there. So, thank you.
Thank you. The last one is Christine Warner.
Good evening. I attended the listening session last night and I came back again tonight. I have three children at Hudson Prairie. One is going into fifth grade next year and then I have one going into third and one going into first. One of my questions is in concerns, transportation. If I were to apply for the exception, boundary exception, will I be able to have transportation? We do provide transportation now to two private schools. So if the answer to that question was to be no, I would like to know why, because we are providing transportation to private schools. I would like my child to have transportation if I was grandfathered in to the school that I am now attending along with my other children. We talked about pulling a whole neighborhood to move to a new school to keep the neighborhood together. Personally, my children's friends are all over the community. Very few of them live in our direct neighborhood. They ride the bus with them, but that doesn't necessarily make them their friends. So therefore, why does it have to, you know, why couldn't we split that neighborhood possibly, not everybody might not agree with me, into two neighboring community schools such as Willow and North Hudson or whatever the split would be to make it more cost-effective and also keep the balance of the numbers at the school? and also keep the balance of the numbers at the school? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy, I tried to write down a lot of these questions. I know one of them, as it relates to the Carriage Lane question regarding the busing efficiency, having buses going out there for two different schools. But why don't you work off of your list, if you have a list of questions?
I'm not sure that I've captured them all either, but maybe between the two of us. Relative to, you know, what's happening now is not necessarily what would happen, you know, once the boundaries were changed. Because at that point, all of the routes would be redeveloped. And we would certainly look at the efficiency of the busing. And occasionally throughout the district, that happens occasionally. But we do try to minimize that. But what's happening now perhaps would not happen with the change of boundaries. Let's see here. The, thinking of the last questions and then kind of moving back, the boundary exception process does not carry with it the provision of district transportation. Boundary exceptions are granted all over the district, from one corner to the other. And it's been looked into, I believe, in previous years. And it hasn't been able to, you know, cost efficiently to do that. Because again, it's all over the district from one corner to another, here and there. You know, I personally, when we have this opportunity, you know, as we do now to draw the boundaries, I know enough about our transportation now to want to look at certain things. When we do the rerouting, I've heard some things like this and other situations relative to people's childcare. And they have childcare in a different area than their children attend and that sort of thing. I'm at least going to look at and show you, at the time we do the rerouting, what it would be like if a parent provided a student to an existing bus stop. And that existing bus stop was going to the school their child attended, and they're residents of Hudson, and there was space on the bus. It seems like we should allow for that. I mean, I've heard of situations where buses pick up kids at childcare, but not all of them, you know? So, I think we're willing to look at that, but it wouldn't, it certainly wouldn't be district-wide, but it might come with certain qualifications of existing bus stop, space on the bus, you know, district resident. The private school transportation is a requirement of law, period. I mean, it's just a requirement of law. There was a question again about the, you know, the five-year plan. I tried to touch on that a little bit with some of the information provided by the planners. They don't know, and they cannot be certain. What we do know, from what they've given to us, is that there's potential, and it's based on a combination of the, what they call the open 40-acre parcels, calculated within the number of acres per lot. And then you have to provide for streets and sewers and that sort of thing. And then you take into consideration what our consultant associated with our demographer has said is about 40% of these newly developed homes would contain K-5 children. There are some lots that are already permitted in the Hudson Prairie area. That planner says one year perhaps, or more, for those to be built. So, you put that all together, you come up with sometime between now and five years from now, another, I've got 87 students, you know. Over the last five years, and I did look at, you know, the past is past and growth, you know, fluctuates. But over the last five years, and not counting all the kids that are, even today, showing up at Hudson Prairie, we've had kids enroll just within the last few days, who are now, you know, going to other schools because it's full. But we've admitted over 100 students to Hudson Prairie. So, you know, you look at the past, and you see over five years, about 100, and then there's X number of additional students being bused somewhere else because there's not room. There's open acres that, you know, even the planners say they're not sure when they'll be developed. And there's a few lots that are already permitted. That's as close as I can come to advising you about that. In terms of the numbers of teachers, how we literally do this with the consultant, the consultant does this and provides it to us, but I certainly check it over. And what happens, you get, within a certain geographic area, there are students, and you move the grade level forward, and you get them grade, you know, the certain grade level. And there's a total. And then you divide that by the number of sections, and from K through 2, minimum 18, maximum 22. So, how many sections within that guideline? And then as you move up to grade 3 through 5, you have the 22 through 27. So, you try 3 sections, 4 sections, 5 sections. And that's literally how it comes out. So, you have 20 sections without the 53 students distributed among these grade levels, and then 24 teachers otherwise. But it's really about the guidelines and the balance of enrollment in the school. Was there something else?
If I could, there was one other question regarding the Tanny location and consideration of that location and not other locations that could have been used as a substitute to relocate. Do you remember that question?
Yeah. Again, I didn't change, I didn't do the boundary work. But I did see enough of the work to know that in the process, you know, which was begun, you know, back in October when you set the criteria, all variety of sections of our district were moved around and clustered together in order to create a certain number of children, you know, within those categories. So, you know, it certainly wasn't the only scenario that was considered in the process work, you know, of the consultant that drew the boundaries. There was no, I heard somebody say something about influence or something. I don't know really what that meant. But it really is, was done by the consultant, and the only criteria that she was given and information was associated with our building capacities, our class-size guidelines, you know, and some transportation, you know, issues that related to certain sections of our district. But it wasn't singled out in any way. And other possible combinations of areas of our district were considered, but didn't turn out. It didn't turn out to align to the criteria as well.
Nancy, just clarification. I think that I understand that comment about indirect influences. I think that was a response to comments in the PowerPoint about the number of people in neighborhoods who haven't said that they wanted changes or haven't, you know, had issues with the, that's the indirect. It's making the assumption that somebody who didn't speak up is satisfied. I think that's what people are questioning with that. I had to think about it myself for a little bit, but I think that's what that means.
That would not be on the front end, you know, of the process at all. It wouldn't be considered on the front end of drawing the boundaries. It's considered really on the back end of it. And, you know, it's not, it's not just about the software and all the manipulation of the numbers and everything. It is about making, you know, one group of parents, you know, pleased and another group not. And I personally did hear from a resident, just verbally, didn't put it in writing, but I remember hearing from someone from that area who said, I hope that those boundaries are not changed because I do want my child to go to Rock. It's been reported through the school that other parents have shared that same thought with school staff. Again, it's not a front-end consideration, but it's something on the back end, I guess, at this point in time. We really, we don't know for sure. But there's no other enhancement, I guess, of the criteria that would cause the administration to say, change this particular boundary.
And we don't require people to give us feedback in writing.
No.
That's not...
It's just an opportunity.
That's not required. People can tell us what they think, and we take that into consideration, too.
I see that Chris is standing at the microphone. Chris, we really have concluded that...
I was just clarifying, and you finally got to what my point was, that indirect is not the people that did not respond. It's saying, talking about hearsay of responses. So, you know, if you really think about that, you can claim hearsay any way you wanted in order to make the decision the way you wanted to make it.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member questions, comments?
I have one.
Mark, go ahead.
Thanks, Nancy. Just, you know, and I have to, I'm not a numbers guy either, but Nancy, I really do have to kind of challenge the four additional teachers for Prairie, too. I mean, you know, I'm talking about 53 kids here, and even, you know, in a four-section building, my rudimentary math skills tell me it's only about two kids per class. You know, so I don't know what, you know, I don't know what the class sizes are sitting at now, but I just can't accept the fact that we need to put on four new teachers.
While she's looking at that, I have, and she has looked at all these numbers. And Mark, just conceptually, what's happened is at Prairie, the class sizes are at the top end of our numbers for each of the grade levels. So, if you add 53 approximately students spread across those grade levels, four different grade levels end up being over the maximum number of our class-size guidelines. That drives another teacher. And that's the criteria we've been using across the district to determine how many teachers we need.
So, what you're telling me, we have four grades at Prairie that are right at the top?
Well, I'm not saying exactly that. What I'm saying is, where they are, plus how many students at that grade level that live in the Tanny West area drives them over the top. Some are closer to the top than others.
But it's about, it's about two kids per grade, right? I mean, you know, four sections, 53 kids, it's...
No, that'd be 20.
Thank you. Just one grade-level example, if you look at, let's see. If you look at grade, grade 1, under the proposal, okay, there are 75 first-grade students. With the addition of the Tanny area, there are 85, okay? So, that's 10, 10 more. If, and then if you look at, and let's just take another one, where we've got here, second grade, second grade, 83 with the proposal in second, 90, 90 in second. And in that particular grade level, we went from four sections to five in order to stay within the class-size guidelines. Otherwise, we would be over.
So, are the problems then at the, basically K through 2, where we have the smaller class-size guidelines?
It would be, fourth grade went up, and third grade, yeah, and third grade went up, and second grade went up. Kindergarten, and just to tell you, too, you know, the kindergarten, how the kindergarten numbers are figured, because we don't have a census on those. And kindergarten registration hasn't occurred yet. But we use just the, we use, the edulogy used the fifth-grade numbers. So, you know, kindergarten is less certain, but that one went up, and that's, that's less certain. And then, of course, it's a point in time. As I said, there are children entering and enrolling in school every day, not just at Hudson Prairie, of course, but at other buildings. Those are just examples, but, you know, it depends on how they fall. And then, and then you figure it out so that it falls within the class-size guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions, Mark? If not, we'll move on to Brian.
I have a comment for discussion.
Okay.
We're kind of at that point yet.
Well, comment versus questions, any other questions of Nancy? Tom?
Nancy, just one question regarding the criteria for exception. There was some discussion last night at the listening session regarding special needs kids. Was that ever thought about in terms of qualifying criteria? If, for example, services weren't available, you know, in one school for a particular special need, that, you know, that would be considered?
Absolutely. It's always, always been true that, and it is the child's IEP team, the Individual Educational Program team, that makes that determination. Once a child is identified as a child with a disability, then that team with the parent makes the placement in a special program. Most of our, you know, we have learning disabilities programs in every building. We have, you know, there are speech and language services in every building. Cognitive disabilities is located, it's low incidence, it's located at North Hudson, you know. But otherwise, you know, and emotional behavior disability, different types of programs available in at least four of our five buildings now. So, the IEP team makes that placement with the parent. Now, if the service exists, you know, on this site and that site, it wouldn't be a boundary exception issue. It'd be just a placement issue. So, yes, that, I'm comfortable that the needs of our children with disabilities will be considered through their IEP teams.
I'd just like to make a comment as it relates to the guidelines, the criteria that the board set back in October. That's what we approved. That's what we asked the administration to do. And I think they've done that quite fairly. This is not a perfect science. But I can tell people on this board, as well as the audience, that every one of our schools in this district is a quality school. I can make that promise. Brian?
So, first of all, I want to, this is going to be a lengthy comment, so just bear with me. So, first of all, I want to thank the administration, Mary, Nancy, Tracy, the leadership team, for the amount of work you put into this thing. I think it's in hundreds of hours, just from you personally, Nancy. So, I just want to thank you. And my comments are really around a 2% to 3% kind of change. I would recommend that we approve this with a few changes. So, tailor that with, I think it's about 2,300 elementary school children, over 2,000. The 800 that were, that are being impacted, the majority of them is basically built a new heights, a new elementary school, and we have to fill that in. That's where the majority of this is happening. And so, I'd like to kind of go back to those criteria, too. We have seven established criteria, building capacities, class size, guidelines, planning for growth, transportation, staffing efficiency, free, reduced lunch balance, and ESL balance. I would submit, I'd like to get some discussion on this, is that the Carriage Homes area... I would submit, I'd like to get some discussion on this, is that the Carriage Homes area, actually, we, I think we meet a criteria better in that neighborhood by actually, because of transportation and things like that, to include that down at Rivercrest and make that just part of the, I'm going to point to a map, but make that part of the, of the pink area going to Rivercrest.
I would support that.
So that's my first recommendation, based on the criteria. And again, it's nothing against the administration. I mean, this, we're talking, you know, a few tweaks on a huge plan.
It's not personal. Believe me, it's not. We're just trying, we're just trying to follow your direction.
So that, and this is just, you know, one person's opinion here, but, and then the other ones a little bit, just, you know, let me extend my comments here another minute or two, is I think there's an eighth, kind of eighth criteria that's implicit, that's, I think we all went into this with, we just didn't write down. And the eighth impact is, once we meet the top seven criteria, let's minimize the current impact to our children, right? We wouldn't, you know, maximize impact to children. We would meet the seven criteria and minimize the impact to the children currently enrolled in our elementary school. So, and also, we know that there are going to be people not happy with, although we have great schools, there are going to be people not happy with this plan and we have to accept that as a community, that it's going to be that way. But I would, I would submit that, that Tanney Lane area, the yellow square, I'm going to use your map. The yellow square right here, that's kind of a, that dips down into the light blue area going to Hudson Prairie. I would submit that that should stay with Hudson Prairie for, really for the following reason is, the reason why we're keeping that out, I know there's a cost factor, I think this, let me address that later, is I'm very sensitive to the fact that we need to have expansion. We don't want to be doing this again. I don't think Nancy, since we could go through this in the next couple of years personally. I want to see her around. On the other hand, if we did move that yellow square, I don't mean to minimize the neighborhood. I don't think calling it the yellow square neighborhood is right, but the Tanney Lane area, if we did move that back to Hudson Prairie, it would still give us 15% capacity in Hudson Prairie for future expansion, help, maybe help with middle school issues. Mary? And I guess I'm comfortable right now with 15%. It's not perfect. I'm making some trade-offs and, and, you know, we have 53 children, kind of burden in hand right now, that are going to be impacted. And I'm okay with the 15% capacity left in that building. I think there's a way to work around the dollars. And so my, and that's not based off of a new criteria. That's based off an implicit eighth criteria that I think we've all agreed to, and that is, once the top seven criteria met, let's minimize the impact of students. So my two recommended changes to a plan, I'm 97% there. My, my only, I do think we have a vote tonight and we should move forward, and is to move Carriage Lane to Rivercrest to keep it with the rest of the neighborhood it's kind of close to. And the second change would be to move the Tanney Lane area back to Hudson Prairie.
Brian, can I ask you a question? And I think that's, you know, that's, that seems to be the hot spot in the discussion here, but the staffing aside, and you had just indicated we don't want to come back to this whole process again. What we're doing with that kind of proposal is we're filling up that school faster. We've also identified that area as the fastest growing potential growth area in the district. Now, let's just, let's, let's just hypothetically look out five years. We've filled up Prairie Elementary. And we have kids now, or families, out in that area that logically should be going to Prairie, possibly, maybe even more logically than this area that, now that we've moved into the Hudson Prairie area, that you, this suggestion. How would you suggest that we deal with that?
First of all, yeah, it's, it's, we're trading off things, so, and I don't have a crystal ball, so I would, there's two, I have two comments on there. Demographics can change. So I know in, in different neighborhoods, we have a lot of young, young students in that Tanney Lane area. If there's not a lot of movement there, those young students are going to become middle school students, right? And there may be, the demographics may just play out appropriately. And so, so I don't have a, I don't have the, I don't have the right answer. It's going to be, it's going to be an issue. The question is, is when is it going to be an issue? And I don't know. I would say that 15% capacity, and by the way, that 15% capacity is based off of 588 students. We're currently operating the school, I know it's, I, I know it's, it's not perfect, and I, and I know it's an issue for, for Melissa and all the teachers in Hudson Prairie, but we're currently operating the school at 659 students, right? So what I'm saying is, I don't want to use that as the new benchmark, but I'm just saying we're currently operating at 659. That still gives us 20, 24% growth potential if we ever had to go back to where we are now. I don't, that's not the perfect solution, but I'm just trying to trade off.
But, but you also realize that currently, we're in a situation, because of the capacities at these schools, where we're doing crazy things. We have, you know, areas south of the freeway that are going to Willow River or North Hudson. You know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to cure those situations, not only in the short term, but in the long term as well.
I guess my point there, my final point, this is, is I'm saying that I understand the issue. I still think there's surge capacity available, growth capacity available into Hudson Prairie. I can't predict the future. I know it, it may or may not be a challenge, what I'm recommending, but I just feel, I feel like this is the, maybe the little nonlinear part of the plan that I have, we have current residents in Hudson that have a, have a serious challenge and I'm trying to address burden hand.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? Because I, I understand why that would be a desirable proposal in terms of the neighborhood and, and why you think it would be acceptable in terms of the impact on the districts that the students would move into. But I want to better understand what happens in Burkhart to Holton. Because what that would mean is that Holton's class sizes would be considerably lower. And the school does fear that programs and resources and educational opportunities and just the impact of a, having enough diversity in their building with a, you know, reasonable class size, that there, that there is a minimum below which it's dysfunctional in some ways. So how do we address those concerns, making the changes to the boundaries you've recommended? Where do they sit?
If I'm not mistaken, isn't this red area what's currently, the current boundaries for Holton? Am I, am I missing something or are we basically keeping the boundaries identical?
And so Holton isn't having any benefit of equalization of...
Except for that?
No, what I'm saying is, is where we currently are at Holton, if I'm reading this map correctly, is the Holton, is the Holton attendance boundary basically consistent with where it is today? On this, on, if we didn't do Tanney, it'd be consistent with what we have right now today.
Right. Nancy?
Yeah, and the reason that...
And it's working well today. I know it's smaller class sizes, but...
Well, you know, Holton, because it's been under-enrolled and remains under-enrolled, has been, has received quite a few of the capped students, you know, where they're, there's no room other buildings, so they are bused out to Holton. That's part of the displaced population that would be returned and...
How many students are that?
Now, that I didn't bring with me, but there's a few.
Gotcha.
And then, yeah, there's, that are being bused out there. And then there are, there are a few boundary exception requests, people for personal reasons, you know, want their children to attend there. And that also, again, this, this law about open enrollment, we have to accept students where there's space. We have about 10, nine or 10 open enrolled students out there.
Okay, so I'll finish my comments then. So to answer your question, Cindy, I'm, I'm, I share that concern, but I'm saying is, it's working okay right now, and I'm not saying we're taking students out of it, we're just not adding more students to it, and it's, again, it's not a perfect solution, so.
Just to clarify, the numbers will be smaller in Holton with that change than they are currently. And just let me play out some of the comments that were made, what that means. So for example, Holton has a part-time counselor and isn't there all the time as in the other schools, because of the number of students being served. And so they have an issue where they need a counselor, counselor's not there that day. And so those are concerns certainly that the staff has, the parents have, and support for their program as well.
Okay. Dan, I have some, just quick comments or observations. First of all, I'm, I'm committed to a decision tonight. I, I think it is time, and I would be remiss to suggest right now what that decision will be, but I'm committed to that decision tonight. The, you know, if I look at our six elementary schools, you know, we have three of them running at 588 capacity, including Rivercrest. We're running two section up at Holton, three section at Willow River, North Hudson. And I, from the time I got on this board, and I will say this publicly and candidly, I have always been concerned about the inequity between Holton and the other elementary schools. And I see that inequity, it works both ways, staffing and support to Holton because of its small size, and then inequity on the other side, the other schools, because of the, the class sizes. Huge inequity, 16, 17, 18 kids per student at Holton, 25, 26, 27 in our, in our other schools. And I was a real proponent of going to an elementary school referendum so that we could get a sixth elementary school on board, begin to take some of the equity or inequity out of the process of where our students went. And I, and just, you know, if you look at the numbers, we're an east-west district and everything funnels east into the west toward the river. Every time that we start talking about planning and growth projections, every time, we run into this east-west orientation. It simply is not going to go away. North Hudson, it sits at three elementary sections today. I don't know if that's ever going to change. We, we have the space to add on. We have the space to add on up at Holton. We keep waiting, 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 waiting for that bridge. I don't know if that's going to happen. But we've got the land up there to go to three section when necessary, but this, this board went through a very, very diligent process to looking at expanding North Hudson and Holton and taking our students from south of 94, if you recall, and taking them up to those two schools and busing. And we made a decision that I supported, and I think was the right decision, to not do that and to build south of 94. So my, my two comments, Carriage Heights, I, that's just, what a disaster for planning. That's in the township, should be in the city. I guess when you live in a community as long as I have, you kind of know some of the politics. That property should have come into the city. It didn't, political reasons. It's kind of an island onto itself. The developer fought to keep it in the township. It's an island in the, in the township. I don't think it's right, but I don't think it's right to kick that development into Rock. As much as I don't like that development, I think it should be on city sewer and water. It's not. It's probably never going to be. But I think those students, I don't, you know, one of the reasons I supported the elementary school south of 94, I didn't like what I saw in Crestview. I didn't like what I saw in Carmichael. And we're going to run a bus right through that, that intersection. So I can support Carriage Heights kicking down to Rivercrest. Tanney Lane, I, I don't like the distance and, you know, we're struggling with growth, you know, and I keep saying, isn't growth fun? Aren't we having a lot of fun in Hudson with our growth? And Tanney Lane is a perfect example of it. I do struggle. I don't think it's fair of those residents to kick them up to Holton. They're oriented to the interstate. I work in the cities, probably 90% of the parents out there work in the twin cities. It's a struggle to fight traffic into the cities. It's a struggle to fight traffic out of the cities. I don't know how you orient them up to, up to Holton. I'd like to see them go there, quite frankly, for that equity issue, but I'm, I'm really struggling to, to send them up there. And I would prefer to see them at, at Hudson Prairie, simply for logistical reasons. And then the last comment I'll make is, we are going to be bringing on our sixth elementary school, and I'm going off the board in April, but this, this board needs to begin to think about your seventh elementary school, because the growth is going to occur. These boundaries are going to change again, and if you don't think that there's going to be a need for a seventh school, even when we come out of this little economic slump, I think the district is fooling themselves. We have the property, and I think a seventh elementary school is going to have to start planning for. And I know Dan is smiling at that, but you need to begin to plan today. We started planning for Rivercrest going back five and six and seven years ago, and it still isn't up and running. So those are, those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Dick. Tom?
Yeah, just several things that I think were brought up before regarding the Tanney location that create issues for us, ones the imbalance, talked about that, you know, the distance that people have to drive from where they're at now. I would also think that there's, that yellow goes further to the east as well, and so, and that there are people living in that far eastern yellow part as well, and they're traveling currently now. That distance equal to, or maybe further than the Tanney Lane folks. We also heard tonight that, about the cost, and it's been questioned, and I think it's been answered, I think we can trust those numbers, $230,000 cost. Roughly that account, accounts for about $4,500 per student of the 53 students in Tanney Lane. That is half of what, if my math is correct, of what the total per student cost is per year for the district. I think we'll need to have some justification if we move this direction to our, to taxpayers in this community, as to why we spend $230,000 for 53 kids, to put it fairly, somewhat coldly, but that's, that's part of the issue. So those are the, you know, those are the things that are, I'm trying to weigh. I have, I would agree with the Carriage Lane, it's Carriage Lane, by the way.
Is it Carriage Lane?
Yeah. The Carriage Lane. That just doesn't affect the criteria that's been stated, and I think it makes sense, so.
Can I make one comment on the dollars? Thought through some of these challenges, so I do think it's an issue, Tom, the dollars. I just would put out something I think about as a board, is eventually, we're going to have growth in our district, so we're going to need those four new teachers, right? So I wouldn't think about this as just a one-off, although this year, it looks like a one-off, we're paying $230,000 or that amount for, to do this change, but I would submit that we're going to have growth in the district, and we're going to need four more teachers, maybe next year. So I think we should, you know, keep that in our cross-check.
Okay. Mary?
I just want to point out, growth in the district isn't included in our numbers. So we could have growth at Rivercrest and add more staff. We could have growth at other schools, maybe at Hudson Prairie. We don't know where that growth would be at the present time. So just so that you know, those four additional teachers or those eight additional teachers, whichever, do not include growth. They include our existing students, an estimation of our kindergarteners. And, you know, additional growth may also drive additional costs.
But it's not safe to speculate, not that Tom was speculating, but it's not, it's not safe to say that it's a discrete function that those four teachers aren't going to help us with future growth. It could help us with future growth without putting additional headcount into our district. It could help us.
I also think that, you know, being a person who, I mean, data for decision-making is, is a, a life project for me. It's not something I do occasionally. And when you use data for decision-making, which is, this is a very data-driven process, you, you really do an injustice to yourselves and to your community. We do an injustice to ourselves and our communities when we don't take into account, after all the number crunching has been done, the fact that there's a humane aspect to what decisions we make with that data. And I don't think we ever... And I don't think we ever, as a board, intended to restrict ourselves to a purely data-driven, maximize efficiency at the cost of the humane element of decision-making, because we have always said, I mean, for long before I came on to this board, and certainly many times since then, we've said that we value the neighborhood school and the sense of community in place, and that's something that really makes Hudson stand different from other districts of our current size and, you know, locality. It makes us different from St. Paul and Minneapolis, and it makes us different from, from a lot of other places. And I think that we should not be afraid to abandon that, I mean, we should, we should be afraid to abandon that, we should not be afraid to trade some small amount of efficiency for effectiveness in our own commitment to the goal of being a humane and student-focused district. So, I would support the moving of Tanny Lane into the Prairie School District, and I certainly support the Carriage Lane moved to the Rivercrest District. And I am not afraid of spending a few extra dollars to be humane.
Okay. Anyone else?
A couple things, Dan, if I might. One thing, and I agree with my colleagues here with, well, we'll take them one at a time, with regard to Carriage Lane, one thing I would like to know, the majority of parents have not expressed concern, or have made verbal comments wanting to stay at E.P. Rock. And I guess I have to direct this at Nancy, can you tell me more about that? I mean, if this neighborhood, and I can certainly see the logic of sending these folks to Rivercrest, if that's the desire of the neighborhood. I'm a little worried when maybe we have a slim minority, the people here, speaking of favor of Rivercrest, and if we know of a, of a groundswell of folks who didn't, you know, bother to come, but submitted verbal comments, and so it's, you know, can you elaborate on that a little bit? You can't, okay.
I really can't, and it was never intended to be, again, it's not, it's not an initial factor, and it's just one of several pieces that were in the PowerPoint, that's, that's all it is. It shouldn't be given, you know, a huge amount of.
Okay. I guess I just want to put you on the spot a little bit here, Nancy, if I can. If you were to characterize, I guess, the wishes of that particular neighborhood, verbal and, and written comments, how would, how would you state the feeling generally is?
Well, if you put them all together, we thought it was, I guess, we thought it was mixed, we thought it was mixed. It is interesting, as I've, you know, as a whole lot of folks not here this evening, because there's, the majority of people are at least okay with what's been proposed. And, and people are, you know, they come forward when they're really unhappy, you know? But there were people throughout the district variously, not just associated with this particular section of the map, but who said, boy, I hope, I hope it doesn't change again now, you know? But they, many of them never wrote anything or submitted anything, you know?
I mean, I guess just, you know.
But I really can't, I can't tell you more.
Just, it'd be nice to kind of have a feel for that. You know, generally, I'm kind of of the mind that, you know, the world goes to those who show up, so, you know, the people that are here today and expressing an interest, I guess I, you know, I give them a certain amount of weight to the folks that aren't here, but, you know, not, it'd be nice to know sort of what, where that lies.
Dan, may I make one comment at the start of this chain, on this particular issue?
Go ahead.
And just to be clear, my recommendation was not based off of, it was really based around the criteria, right? Where I looked at the transportation and looked at whether it was in proximity to the rest of the area, and I think we, I think we can go back to the criteria and say that that's what driving that process.
I guess that was a little less for me, Brian, simply because it's, it's a contiguous area, and as Nancy said, I am expecting bus routes to be completely different, so, you know, I mean, I understand your point, it's just probably lesser in, in my scale.
Mark?
We, we've received some word from the school today, that there were some parents who have expressed to employees wanting to stay at Rock. But yet, you know, you don't know when that occurred, maybe that's changed, maybe that's the same, it's hard to make an assumption from that. So, you know, I wouldn't wait that heavily, I would just say that we have had mixed information, and we can't tell you how the community is at the present time.
Okay. Fair enough. Next question, if I could still then, and that is that I have a strong disposition to letting the folks in the Tanny West remain at Prairie, for largely for just logistical reasons, I think are probably most compelling to me. I just simply can't view Holton as a neighborhood school, it's just, I can't get my arms around that. But I do want to throw this out there for all of us to think about, and maybe Tim could maybe help us a bit. You know, where's, where's the $230,000? Can we, you know, come up with this? I mean, I, I'm not a guy that spends money I don't have, so I'd like, I guess I'd like to have a little discussion about what will have to be done to get this almost quarter of a million. I mean, if, you know, I'd like to do what we can to make that work, but, Tim, can you tell me how challenging that will be?
Well, first, we're, we're just starting our budget process. We're bringing on, of course, we're bringing on Rivercrest, so that will be additional costs into the budget for next year. So, it gets a little bit hard for me to answer that question right now. I wish I could give you, give you a definite answer.
It's an unfair question for you, but.
Yeah, sorry, it is, it's very, very difficult to answer at this point, because we are just getting into the budget process.
Mark, just some additional information there. You know, we have, as we talked about the referendum, we identified about an estimated $800,000 for support, support staff for Rivercrest. So, that will be coming out of the staffing budget. We have additional, we have the $230,000 for the original proposal that we assume would be coming out of the staffing budget, if the board approves that, and then any additions that you also approve. The administrators do have significant concerns that any additional funds would come from other staffing requests that are also needs within the district, and that's as far as we can tell you at the present time.
Okay. I, what I'd like to do is sort of bring this a little bit to a close, because we've spent some good time on it, which we need to do, but I also know we are halfway through our evening agenda, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, to move this along, and at least get it on the table, I'm prepared to make a motion, and then we can get it on the table for discussion. I'm prepared to make a motion that the school board this evening adopt the proposed 2008, 2009 elementary school attendance boundaries with the current 2007, 2008 boundaries shown in red line, as submitted to the board, with the following exceptions, that the property south of I-94 and development commonly called Carriage Lane be excluded from this boundary map and be attached to the Rivercrest boundary. And the second exception would be the property commonly referred to as Tanny Lane or north of McCutcheon Road, that that be excluded from the proposed Holton Elementary boundaries and remain attached to the Hudson Prairie Elementary boundaries. I'll make that a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Could I just clarify the motion for a minute?
Absolutely.
Because it's something that I heard, I don't know if I heard it correctly. Dick, you referred to the red lines and that, those are existing boundaries?
I'm referring to the red boundaries as presented on the map, or the boundaries submitted to the board.
Could we change that to the colored sections, and then with your exceptions?
I will amend my motion to that effect, to refer to the colored connotations for the individual elementary schools.
Thank you.
And remove the red line.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion here? We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So, the motion is approved.
Take a, maybe appropriate, take a roll call?
Why don't we start with Erica?
Share your aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Holland, no.
Minnick, aye.
Trinahoy, no.
Crimmans, aye.
Bell, aye.
Okay, motion's approved. Thank you. I think we can move on now. The financial audit report, Tim, do you want to lead us in that?
Page eight has a report from our audit firm, Larson Allen CPAs. And Larson Allen conducted the audit of the district records for 2006, 2007. The district received an unqualified opinion on those financial statements, which is the most favorable opinion that you can receive. The audit is done on an annual basis, as a requirement for every school district in the state of Wisconsin. Tonight, Tom Cordis is here. Tom was the auditor in charge for '06-'07, and he will highlight various points of the audit report and answer any specific questions that you might have, so.
Okay. Tom, can you come forward and give us a brief report, please?
Good evening. I'm Tom Cordis of the accounting firm of Larson Allen. Last Thursday, we presented the audit findings to the finance committee, and like Tim said, I'll just highlight some of the key, key numbers from that report. General fund, general fund again is your main operating fund, that fund balance increased in 2006, 2007, just over $600,000, giving you a ending fund balance of approximately $18,200,000. Of that amount, approximately $4,400,000 designated for capital projects. The balance, approximately $13,800,000 designated for working capital. The majority of that, just over $9 million, designated to finance your property taxes receivable. That amount, you don't receive from the county treasurer until August 20th. That's the reason it's designated. Looking at the budget to actual, favorable variance, variance being defined as the difference between actual and budget. Favorable being revenues, your actual revenues exceeded your budgeted revenues, that variance was approximately .7%. Also, a favorable variance in the expenditures of approximately 1.8%. Two key transfers out of your general fund, approximately $4,700,000 transferred from the general fund to your special education fund. Now, the special education fund, all your special ed costs are recorded in that fund, funded mainly by state and federal aid. The balance is then funded with a transfer from the general fund, that $4,700,000 represents your share of those costs, and that's up approximately $60,000 over last year. The other transfer from the general fund, just over a million dollars transferred from the general fund to your debt service fund. Purpose of that was to pay off that '99 state trust loan loan, which you incurred to pay off your Wisconsin prior service liability. So, that debt was paid off in 2006, 2007. Debt service fund, fund balance at the end of the year, just over $13 million. The majority of that, just over $9,600,000 was for the, paying off the refinancing of those bond anticipation notes, which was paid off in August of 2007. The balance, just over $3,500,000 used to make your fall payments on your principal, on your debt. Reason being is that you don't receive any tax dollars until January, so that, that balance has to fund your principal interest payments in usually October. Capital projects fund, new in 2006, 2007, approximately $9,800,000 set aside to fund part of the construction costs of the new elementary school. District-wide, across all funds, totals, federal aid for the year, approximately $1,400,000, up approximately $46,000 over last year, represents approximately 2.5% of total district Bigger percentage state aid, approximately $24,800,000, represents approximately 45% of district revenues, an increase over last year of approximately $1,800,000. So, that's kind of hits the key financial numbers. 2006-'07 was a transitional year for the financial services, Tim taking over from Arnie. From an audit perspective, everything's, went very well, Tim and his staff did an excellent job, very few adjustments. And that kind of summarizes the key financial numbers. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions for the auditor?
Mr. Chair, just a real quick question. The, you talked about the $1.8 million increase of funding from the state, but yet, 45% of our revenue?
Right.
Isn't that a decrease percentage-wise of our budget from what it previously has been? I thought, I had the idea that we were typically running 48%, 49% state funding.
I don't know if you're just talking general fund? That was a number across all the funds, I'm not sure what that.
Across all the funds?
Across all the funds, not just, usually when they talk about percentage funding, usually you just talk about general fund. This is across, looking at the district as a whole, across all the funds.
Okay.
I think the overall budget too, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, was within the district goals that we had set, or?
Yeah, Tom, Tom had mentioned, I believe it was .7% on the revenues, .7% variance, favorable on the revenues, and was it, we were 2.?
1.8%.
Or 1.8% favorable on the expenditures, so, well, within our goal that we had set, I believe was 2, 2 or 3% variance.
Yeah. Good job on that.
Mr. President, one question, good comment for Tom, or Tim, or Tom, thanks. Our bond rating, it's always been really a good bond rating, is that, I know it's a little bit independent from the bond rating, but any kind of comments on that, should we continue to enjoy our strong bond rating so we can borrow money at cheap rates, if we ever need it?
Yeah, as far as our, as far as our audit and our financial position, it remains strong, as strong as it, strong now as it was previous year, if that's your question.
I think Tom reported tonight that we're, was it $13 million in debt service right now, is that what you said?
That was at the end of June 30th, 2007, but most of that, $9,600,000, was used to refinance that bond anticipation note in August.
Yeah.
So, that's reduced, so, the debt service to pay off, reserved for other debt services of $3,500,000, which probably, most of that was spent in, in the fall to cover those debt service payments.
And then that's compared then to the operating budget for the district, or in its evaluation of bond, our bond credit, our bond rating? Or is it in consideration of the total assets as well as the operating budget?
I guess, I'm not sure exactly what they use, but I would think that your operating budget is key, they probably look at fund balance besides, I think your financial advisor could give you a better insight as to exactly what criteria goes into a bond rating.
Yeah, they, that's right, they look at fund, some of, some of the areas, fund balance, the, the taxing capacity of the district to raise funds, what your financial position is, variances to your budgets, many different, and a lot of economic data to the air, specific to your area.
I think the other, the other thing worth mentioning too is that, Tim, as well as the finance committee, continues to be looking at possibly. committee continues to be looking at possibly refinancing some of the outstanding debt if there is an opportunity to seek a lower interest rate like we've done in the past and been able to save the district considerable dollars through that process, and will continue to do that, especially in, you know, as the declining interest rates occur, we'll be watching that.
That's right.
Dan, just a question for Tom. Tom, could you just elaborate and maybe offer an opinion on finding 2007-1 towards the back of the report? Page 56.
Oh, oh, the finding, okay. New reporting standards went into effect in 2006, 2007. One of the things we have to report on is if we prepare the financial statements, that becomes a finding. And that's what you hire us to do. It's not that your staff isn't capable of doing it, usually they just don't have the time. I mean, I've been doing this for over 30 years, and I've never run into a place that did their own audit report or financial statements that we had, could actually come in and audit. You hire us to prepare them. But because of the new reporting standards, it's kind of a trickle-down effect from Enron. It points out, having, I guess, the auditee accept responsibility for the financial statements. So basically, it says, yes, it's your statements, we prepare them, but because of the fact that we prepare them, becomes a reportable condition.
Okay. That's kind of, as best I could read through, it sort of gleamed too. So what we have here, just have a, as you said, I guess, a sort of change in the standards that would, I guess, ideally recommend us to have some sort of internal auditing system going on.
Well, I guess we're not recommending, we have to report on the fact that...
Right. Well, somebody's recommended, the new government accounting standards would be recommending that. You're not, I understand you're not recommending that, but that's, that's sort of, all this has been highlighted there.
Yeah, we have to report on the fact that we actually prepare your financial statements for you.
And I think, as you said, Tom, there's absolutely nothing unusual about that, and you wouldn't expect our school district to have this internal audit mechanism set up. Is that correct?
That could actually prepare your financial statement. That's true. Like I said, usually it's not that they're not capable of doing it, but there's a substantial amount of time that goes into it to do that.
Right.
And that's quite frankly what you hire us to do.
Okay.
Tom, maybe, just to kind of help add clarification, can you state the approximate percentage of districts that have this reportable condition, new for this year, of the districts that you're auditing?
Everyone, like I said, I've been doing this 30 years. I've never run into a place that prepares their own financial statements. I would suspect, all the ones that we do, that comment's in there. Maybe some of the bigger ones might do their own, like city, excuse not, school district of Milwaukee, Green Bay maybe, you know, maybe Madison, but generally, they don't prepare their own financial statements. So districts your size, you're probably going to see that comment in every audit report.
Tim or Tom, clarification, Mark's using the word preparing our audit, and Tom is using the word financial statements. So tell me the difference.
Well, the audit report is actually that one-page opinion on page one. That's our report. The rest of this are your financial statements that we prepare for you. So the only thing that really belongs to us is the one page. The rest are basically your financial statements that we prepare for you. It's generally called, well, financial statements and supplemental information, generally called just the audit report, but actually it's your financial statements. The actual report is just that single page.
Okay.
But generally, it's usually just called the audit report.
Sure. Thank you, Tom. Any other questions for him? I would like to have you make a note about, you're no longer with the smaller firm, and you've, I think you've indicated you've merged with Larson Allen.
Well, yeah, our point of view, like Tracy and Toll, we had about 12 employees. Larson Allen is maybe 1,200. We like to think of it as a merge. They kind of think of it as an acquisition.
Yeah.
But it's semantics.
Think big, think big. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll abstain tonight from any vote on Larson Allen. I have the equity position in a company that has a buying agreement with Larson Allen, so I'll abstain from any vote.
So noted, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the financial audit report as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Thanks again, Tom.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Rivercrest Underpass preliminary design and survey.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to, although I don't believe there's any conflict of interest here, for the sake of not having any appearance of impropriety, I think I should relieve myself, or I should actually remove myself. I might do that too. I'll remove myself from the room as well as abstain from this.
Hey, Meg, get that right.
Thank you, Meg, for clarifying that.
Okay, so noted. Thank you, Tom. One other comment, I have to leave shortly, so I'm going to turn over the gavel here to my vice president, Mr. Minnick. So with that said, we'll go on with the Rivercrest Underpass discussion. I'm sorry.
I'll take that one.
Is that him?
That's me.
Okay.
There was a loose leaf handout and some commentary regarding both the sanitary sewer project and the Rivercrest Underpass project. And so the agenda is the underpass first, and what we're proposing tonight is a phased-in approach regarding the underpass, a phased-in approach to the design, the bidding, and the construction of the underpass. And this will allow us to get started, this will allow us to keep on a time schedule so that construction of an underpass can be coordinated with the roadwork that will be done out at Rivercrest. And the first phase is preliminary design and a topographic survey, and the cost, total cost for that is $8,000. This cost could potentially be shared with the YMCA, and there is a, we should have a proposal from Stevens Engineering, which outlines the various approval processes, the dates, and then the total cost. But right now, we're looking at just your approval of the $6,000 for the preliminary design, and then $2,000 for topographic survey. And I do have two, if you have specific questions, Angela Pope-Nagin from Stevens Engineering is here to answer questions, both on, on both of the next two agenda items, sanitary sewer and the underpass.
Mr. Chair, I have, I guess, a...
Mark. Go ahead.
A financial question, and that is, where are we with the financing of the actual underpass?
Right.
I know that that's a work in progress, but where are we on that?
Right now, there are different programs being looked at to raise funds. However, and that's why I'm recommending a phased-in approach, so that we're incurring costs a small amount at a time, but yet meeting the certain, meeting certain timetables. So I see Mary has stepped out, but...
I guess, just my concern is that, my understanding is we were going to try to, you know, finance this project with non-taxpayer dollars, and so...
That's correct.
I'd like to know what our prospects are before we, you know, sign here to start doing some survey.
Well, it's a chicken and egg. To develop the preliminary design, preliminary engineering, which would identify costs, preliminary costs, that would be, then be the vehicle with which we would go out to private individuals, private companies, and foundations to seek funding for the underpass between the YMCA and Rivercrest. We have not done that. We've had preliminary discussions with various parties. We've looked at grants and grant applications. So we remain optimistic, but we can't give you a dollar amount as we sit here this evening.
That's great, yeah. There is a, there's a grant that is being applied for. However, until we get the signed copyback saying we were awarded the grant, it's really hard to commit to those dollars. And again, that's why, really, we're looking at this phased-in approach. It allows you the opportunity, if we do have the dollars available, to get the project done. If you, you know, if the decisions are delayed here, it may impact, it certainly would impact the cost if you can't do it in conjunction with the roadway improvements. So again, that's why we're taking a look at this phased-in approach, rather than, you know, doing something lump sum. But again, it is, it is a little bit difficult to address now because we don't have definite dollars on the table for the project.
If I could just, I guess, just ask Dick directly, and as chair of the Facilities Commission, I'm sure you've spent a great deal of time looking at this, and is this a proposal that you endorse and comfortable with?
Yes, and I was going to, I was going to address that. This did come through the Facilities Committee and is in front of the board tonight in the form of a recommendation to proceed for the $6,000 on the preliminary engineering documents or design, and $2,000 for the, for the topo.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Is there a point at which the private funding that would be developed for this project would reimburse the district for these upfront costs? Or would this be a district cost?
We anticipate that to be a part of the process, so that we can lump these costs together. The difficulty is to go out and raise those funds and not be able to talk in specifics. And that's, that's what we hope to accomplish, or will accomplish with the preliminary design.
So the district is putting up basically $8,000 upfront with the hope and expectation that the information that comes from that expenditure will facilitate private funding that would reimburse us for that $8,000? And if it doesn't happen, then we've just taken a risk that we've invested that...
That is correct. Yeah, and it's a go, no-go for this summer to be able to coincide the construction of the underpass with the reconstruction improvement on County Road F between the YMCA and Crestview.
So if we, something happens and it's not a go for this summer, the project is scrapped and started over, or?
Well, I think, I would hesitate to say scrapped. I think it would be more of a hindrance or a longer hill to climb. I think the costs would escalate just by inflation alone, plus, once County Road F is improved, all the turning lanes are put in, we would then, two years, three years, four years, have to dig under that. So I think it's fair to say that the costs would go up, and I see Angela Pope-Nagin shaking her head. So it, the intent is to do the design and solicit and raise the funds for construction consistent with County Road F this construction, this upcoming construction season.
And your personal unofficial, we can't really, like legally hold you to it, opinion is that this is very doable?
Well, I think it is. I think it is. You know, we have some work to do to go out and engage additional private foundations in the St. Croix Valley and contact industries and private individuals, but I'm optimistic that some of the preliminary discussions we've had, that we should be able to accomplish that.
And since you're retiring from the board, is this one of the things that you'll be concentrating on?
I will still volunteer to help make sure that happens.
Oh, in your capable hands, that's an assurance.
Mr. President, while I agree with the project, I'm having a little challenges with putting dollars until we raise some money. I know it's a little chicken and egg, Dick. I don't know if Stevens will do this thing pro bono. I'm probably a pretty, I'm just having a hard time supporting, putting dollars down. I remember my self-voting was basically, we're going to have allocated, I know that's our intention, I'm just having a little concern doing it before we have dollars. So I just want to share my thoughts on that.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll...
Yeah, just real quick, on Brian's comment, part of it is fundraising, but also part of it is construction schedule, so that we can get out and do the topo, do the preliminary design, do the engineering documents, get out, you know, to kind of, if we're going to do it this year, then the final construction documents have to be prepared, we have to go to bid, and it will be St. Croix County that will be doing County Road F. I don't know who would be doing the underpass.
I'll just add too, in a fundraising situation, it's not unusual, you do have to put up some upfront costs and design just to be able to show your potential donors what it is that you're going to be doing. So that's, you know, other than, other than the topo map, again, but the timing of that is integral if the project is a go. We do need to get that done.
Okay, so just, just one brief comment. It would have been easier for me if I would have known that upfront. When I voted on the original, to go ahead and raise some kind of non-taxpayer dollars, it would have been helpful for me to know kind of upfront that we will do an $8,000 investment, and then we followed up. That would, you know, I'm looking, you know, kind of backwards, but it would have been helpful for me to know that kind of upfront. Because when we approved this, we didn't talk about us funding some dollars upfront and then being reimbursed. We talked about using non-taxpayer dollars for this project.
Right. The, well, and this, the part of this cost is in the, is in the total budget that we've talked about. It's part of the engineering cost.
Yeah, I know, Tim, but specifically, we talk about this project being funded from non-taxpayer money.
Right.
Okay.
Did you just say that this portion of that project has been a part, included in our construction budget all along?
No, this is a separate part, but as, as we've talked about the underpass and the total cost for the underpass, this part of that is included in that, in the total budget for the underpass.
Okay. And again, Tim, these costs are not solely just for the underpass. It also relates to the, the other work relating to the redesign of the road, is that...
The costs, the costs here are just, are solely related to the underpass.
Is it?
Right. Yeah, and then we'll be talking about the sanitary sewer bid next, and...
Yeah, and if we think if there's going to be any cost savings, it's, the cost savings has to arrive with a combination of the improvement in County Road F at the same time that the the underpass is done. That's right, yeah.
Dan, if I could just, one kind of quick follow-up question for Dick. And is it such that it's, we have this here tonight because there's been some investigation into some, some private monies, and sort of the response has been, well, you know, we may have some interest, but we need to see, we need to see the plans, we need to see a map. I mean, is there, I guess I'm just kind of looking for a sense that there are people maybe waiting for what we're about to do here before they open up the pod.
Well, I can't say that, Mark. I can't say that the dialogue or discussions with various parties have said, gee, if you give us this, we'll give you that. That really hasn't occurred. But the discussions have pretty much said, what are your costs? And what, what are you expecting of us to contribute? That's the type of dialogue that we have had.
Okay. And your sense is that this is a missing piece, that we would need to complete our story?
Well, it is, yes, it is. Yeah, it is. Well, it is, yes, it is. Yeah, it is. And then I say that in concert also with the, the timing schedule to do this with County Road F. So, it's really a two, two-part proposal, or two reasons.
Okay. We do have a request to speak on this topic. Steve Hermsen? You can state your name, address.
Yep, Steve Hermsen, 813 Harborview Road here in Hudson. Just a comment for the Board to consider. When, if, I know that this project, you've made a very strong effort to look towards private funds and donations for this underpass. But until that time, I would hope that the Board would wait for those dollars to come in before any of the expenditures or planning, or should I say, the dollars come in to help with the planning and the implementation prior to going forward. That's a true commitment, that the people are donating, are on board, and are, are willing to support all the costs. What I'm hearing tonight is you're asking for the $8,000 upfront in the event that the planning were to go forward as if you could get this put in prior to the road, at the time of the road reconstruction. However, what we haven't heard is, in the event that you can't secure the funding, would you be needing to go through and redo your bids and your projections, per se, the costs, after the road had been redone, should they, should the funding not come through? That's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Well, Steve, I'll answer that last question. I alluded earlier to the, in the discussion, that in my estimation, and Angela, you can, if you disagree with me, say so. But once County Road F goes in, there's no question in my mind that the costs will increase if we are able to secure the funding at a later point in time. Does that answer your question? Angela, I'm sorry, did I, yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll, it's a topic for action, so I'll entertain a motion for the.
Well, as Chair, and Erica, and I are the two remaining members on the committee. I will put a motion on the table to approve a $6,000 expenditure for preliminary design for an underpass between YMCA Camp St. Croix and the new Rivercrest Elementary. And secondly, approve a $2,000 expenditure for topographic mapping of the same construction area for the underpass.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Erica. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, four in favor and two opposed, so the motion's approved. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to have Dick chair the rest of this meeting. And the next item is the Rivercrest sanitary sewer bid. Tim?
Okay. Tim, just a moment, I'm gonna have the record noted that we're changing Chair. Mr. Turner, departing, Mr. Minnick coming on as Chair. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay. On page 11 of your packet are the results of the bids for the sanitary sewer construction at Rivercrest. And you'll see, we did get seven bids, so we did have a good turnout. It appears that Albrightson Excavating out of Woodville is the low bidder, $315,403. And as part of this, as part of the topic tonight, we do have, there is some additional information. There's an opportunity here, as it relates to the roadway, to cooperate with the city and the county. And I did put some additional information in the Board packet, a little narrative concerning that. And if you, if you look to the map in the packet, you'll see a layout of County F, and then as it transitions into Carmichael, and then Cooley Trail. And what's been proposed is the county would like to make some additional safety enhancements to the roadway. They'd like to see County F transition, have a better transition into Carmichael. And that would involve widening the roadway. They'd also like to see Cooley Trail, the intersection, with the intersection at F, come out to a 90-degree angle. And so, it involves all three entities. It involves the county, it involves the city, and it does involve the school district. And how it involves us is during the sanitary sewer installation, we're going to be disturbing roadway, which we're going to have to repair. And the, the city is, again, City Council still has, has been informed of this. They still have to approve it. But the city is saying they're in support of the project because they do feel that in the near future, as with the growth, they're going to need to make some improvements out on Carmichael as it is. But we will be disturbing the roadway with sanitary sewer installation. And so, we looked at it, Angela had looked at our numbers for, for our installation. And we've determined about, about $26,000 if we didn't, if we did this project, that's working with the city and the county, we're going to, there's gonna be about $26,000 that we would not expend due to the resurfacing of the roadway. If the project doesn't happen, we're going to spend the $26,000 with, with the repair of the roadway. So, to be able to shift dollars, essentially shift dollars from the sanitary sewer bid, and just pay either the county or the city for the work that's done, the city, or the county would be doing the work, and the city shares roughly, I think it's about $75,000. But it just seems to make sense. We're going to gain a much better, much safer intersection at Cooley and F by making it a 90-degree. And we're also gonna benefit by wide, by having that, that much better transition from F to Carmichael. The green, the green-hatched area is, are the proposed areas that would be reconstructed. And I think that maybe the, probably the biggest question mark here with this project, this piece of the project going forward, is that the city would need to obtain some right-of-way from the owners of the dog track. So, if that can be done for a nominal fee, the project will probably go ahead. If it can't be, then we'll go on our way, do the, do the sanitary sewer installation, repair the roadway, et cetera. So, again, just kind of a piece of information for right now.
Okay. Anything else, Tim?
No.
Wasn't there a question on the low bid that came in from?
Albrightson, yes.
From Albrightson out of Woodville?
Right. When we, when we did discuss the results of the bid at Facilities and Grounds, we did need to clarify with Albrightson that they did bid the full amount, including taxes, because we'll, what we'll do is the school district will issue purchase orders directly for supplies and materials so that we don't pay tax on them. So, and that was clarified in the, so Albrightson is, is in fact a little bidder.
So, it's a valid bid?
Yes.
Okay. Angela, you're shaking, yeah, okay.
And if you have any specific questions too, of course Angela is here to answer those.
Brian?
I have to put a motion on the floor.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion. And before you do that, I do want to have the record recognize that Mr. Holland has rejoined the meeting on agenda number. Yeah, he feels a lot better. Agenda number 7E, Rivercrest sanitary sewer bid. So, welcome back. Brian, motion?
Move to approve the Rivercrest sanitary sewer bid as described by Tim Erickson.
And I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mark. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries 6-0. Okay, 7F, procedure 6163.1, school-sponsored student trips to other countries. Nancy?
Okay, page 12 through 14. You've seen an outline of this procedure before. You saw it September 10th at your regular Board meeting, in association with a request for a student, a school-sponsored student trip to another country. This is the legally-prepared procedure. It's being requested by Board Member Crimmens and myself to, for you to approve this procedure. It was recommended by our legal counsel that the Board adopt a procedure like this. And it is associated with an already-existing policy on field trips, co-curricular trips, and extended tours.
Do this more policy with a recommendation? Cindy? You did, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Bell.
Second.
Second by Holland. All those in favor?
Dick, just a quick comment, I guess. In, under chaperones on, on page 14, there is a typo. I assume it means to say in the first paragraph, with or without. But somebody would've caught that. And then I just, there's a question, you know, mentions that chaperones must receive the same training as other district volunteers, first aid, CPR, et cetera. Is that a, you know, requirement, so if somebody's gonna be a chaperone, that they would, have you CPR certified?
Well, it depends, it depends on, well, usually, usually that, that particular training is, you know, a staff member has it usually, and an administrator that accompanies the, the trip. But we have to make sure that somebody is CPR-trained. And if, if not, then we would, we would require that of the chaperones. It's not presently a requirement to be a chaperone, but this is, we're talking about trips to another country.
Okay.
Which, which would make it, which would make it even more pertinent.
So, chaperone is, is, somebody's chaperoning a trip to Duluth with the choir. You know, they wouldn't be required, but this is pertaining to somebody who is taking a student group to Mexico, or Costa Rica, or South America somewhere, or Africa. And we do believe that we need to be able to provide basic first aid, first responder services to our students. And I don't think that's too much to ask of chaperones going overseas.
No, no, I'm in complete agreement. I mean, I didn't phrase my question well. I guess I was just questioning, you know, if we're sending three, three chaperones to a large group going to overseas or something. And the word does say must, so I'm just wondering.
I would think all three. That was my intent.
Your intent would be to have, even if there's, one of the chaperones is certified in CPR and first aid, we would want all of them to have.
Because you have 60 students, and one chaperone taking a group of 20 in three different directions. I want all 60 of those students to have access to a chaperone with basic first aid, especially because this doesn't differentiate between European countries and Third World countries. And I just think it's our responsibility to provide that for students.
Fair enough. Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Bell, and second by Mr. Holland. Any more further discussion?
Just a quick question regarding what, following up with Mark's question. Does that mean then, and is it stated that the district then pays for that certification if a chaperone doesn't currently have it?
Doesn't say that.
So, so it's assumed that they incur that cost on their own?
Yeah, we do have, you know, people who are not only trained, but also certified to deliver the training, who are employees of the district.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 7G consent items, personnel expenditures. You have expenditures in front of you this evening, and the amount of $2,932,658.31. And it is on the, on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent items and expenditures in the amount just previously stated.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Mr. Bell's second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, then we have a presentation. This is a group headed by Cindy Landers that came in front of the Facilities Committee, and presenting the full Board tonight. Cindy's a science teacher at the middle school. And she is going to talk this evening for a proposal for a school force near the middle school. And she's a science teacher, and is kind of the coordinator and environmental director of the garden and the pond up at the middle school. So, Cindy, I'll have you take over, and then you can introduce your, your members with you.
Okay, well, thank you for letting us speak tonight, and I would like to introduce Jeremy Solan. He's with University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. He's the coordinator for the school force, and he's made the trip over here to answer any questions and clarify any information that you may need clarified.
And that microphone is adjustable if you.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I just want to make a couple of kind of introductory comments, and then as Cindy said, I'll be happy to take questions too. But I coordinate the statewide school force program at UW Stevens Point. And in that position, I work with districts that have registered school force to help them to develop those sites as effective educational resources. And there are about 200 school districts in the state that have those registered school forces, about 350 registered school forces. And they, they really are incredible educational resources to help to connect students to place and to enhance education through hands-on, active education, and also to really strengthen community and school relationships. So, I hope that you'll support the middle school's effort to designate a school force there. Some of the benefits that the district gets out of that are access to specific school force grants, resources from our program, assistance from the DNR and management. So, there really aren't many drawbacks, but a lot of benefits for registering a piece of land with that, with the, with the program. So, Cindy?
I would also like to recognize Gwen Conklin, and she's one of the teachers that's helping me support this. There's five teachers, three in the Hudson Middle School, one at the high school, and one at Prairie Elementary, that are supporting this proposal and currently writing an education plan grant for the Wisconsin Environmental Education Board. So, with that, I'll move on to my 10 minutes or less presentation. Just beyond Hudson Middle School is a secret educational opportunity. It's a small forested parcel of land tucked away near community trails, schools, and ballparks. It's just waiting to be discovered, explored, and tended. It's a perfect place for a school force, and we'll pause right here for one moment. In your packets, I wanted to make a little plug for Anderson Passay Engineering. This firm has done a full-blown map for us at their own expense, so their generosity I would like to commend. And they, there's two maps, one with an aerial photo interlaid, and it shows the ownership of this parcel of land. It's approximately 10 acres southeast of Hudson Middle School, and it's entirely owned by the City of Hudson. And it is adjacent to school district property. And I've already shared this information with the Parks and Rec Board and the City Council. And both are willing to work with Hudson School District as a partnership with this piece of land. Place-based learning, or education gives children a sense of place meanings, values, and feelings connecting them with their community. In the forest area, we have berries. These are just some of the pictures. It's amazing that right here in the little town, you know, right in the city, we have this diversity of plants. And we even have a pond part of the year. Wisconsin has a long and proud tradition with boasting over 350 registered school forests. And what I'm going to share with you today is some of the values and benefits of a school forest, how a school forest works with the education plan, a forest board, a forest, how we manage the forest, financing, and then sustainability. School forests are parcels of land developed and managed by a school board of, I mean, I did this last time, a forest board of directors. The goal is to provide a place for outdoor education, service learning. The goal is to provide a place for outdoor education, service learning, and connections with nature. We will integrate the environmental education into our school curriculum. We'll meet state education standards. We'll demonstrate sustainability and natural resource management to our children, strengthen school community involvement, and generate income for educational activities. School forests provide a place for innovative outdoor learning and play. Research shows that activity-based learning experiences enhance learning and increase students' motivation to learn. How does it work? First, we create an educational plan. We organize a school forest board. We identify improvement priorities, and then the board determines how to obtain the funding and volunteers to complete the projects. We currently have five school forest educators and administrators working together to see how this would fit in with our district's curriculum. Within this education plan, we have to come up with a rationale, education connections, and then details to assure the sustainability of the project. The school forest board will facilitate management practices, and they will also include community members, students, and representatives from local organizations. Currently, we have five teachers on the board, tentative board. Don Boer, a DNR forester from Wisconsin. Alicia Miller, St. Croix Land and Water Conservation employee. One member from the Hudson-Parkson Recreation Board is supposed to be on it, according to the mayor. And Ken Holman, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources forester, parent, and also a member of the St. Croix Valley Sustainability, Citizens for Sustainability organization. And we also have many students that are wanting to be on this board. The school forest board will identify the forest management practices and any improvements needed in the parcel of land. Today's youth are our future leaders and will help develop our policies and decision-making in, with our world. Here's some of the educational advantages. We can teach animal science, plant science, earth science, and environmental science. And again, environmental education is best when infused through direct, hands-on experiences and captured, capturing those teachable moments. Here's some of the improvement ideas that we've been discussing, improve trail system and add interpretive signs so community members can enjoy the forest parcel as well. Construct a dock so that we can have easy access to the water for water studies, and provide tables for the students to record their data. As far as management, we're looking at having a shoreline restoration, controlling the lovely buckthorn that's out there. And then we have an erosion issue on the south slope of the forest, and we have a plan for that. There's one slope on the west side that is, could be turned into a prairie. So how are we going to pay for all this? Our most important question. There are many grants. The first and most important grant is the one that Jeremy had mentioned. The Wisconsin Environmental Education Board has grants available for school forests, and WEAB is, all these organizations are part of WEAB. And just for school forests alone, they allot $190,000. Currently, we're writing a grant for the $5,000 small grant to pay for the education plan, to pay for the teachers' time. Other grants that I've written and that are environmentally or science-oriented are, this is part of my list. How do we sustain this school forest? School forests work on a partnership basis. We work with community members, and school members, and parents, and students, and so whenever you meet regularly with a diverse group like this, the sustainability is much more probable. Involving community, combining your strengths and advantages and opportunities are all worked towards sustainability. Things to keep in mind is my little plug. Children learn better when they are actively engaged in learning. There is no better way than to learn from the great outdoors. Children who play life discern its true law and relations. Experiential learning encourages students to change from passive learners to self-motivated learners and assertive action-takers. And teaching children about natural world should be treated as one of our most important events of their lives. Basically, to have a school forest, the school board will sign a land use agreement with the City of Hudson, and so that we know that the land is being used as an educational purpose for, as a school forest. Any partner or party can rescind the deal, so it's not a binding agreement over, you know, if somebody decides to change their mind.
Okay, any questions on the board for Cindy? This is a discussion topic now for action tonight.
Cindy, I just hit. It's tough, I'm looking at you. Now, this is city-owned property.
Yes.
And they would be, and the president indicates they'd be willing to let us designate it and use it as a school forest.
Yes, both the Parks and Rec and the City Council gave their thumbs up.
Did they indicate any plans they would have if you choose this property?
No, currently, it's a storm drain retention pond, and so it's used just to contain all the water, so it's running off from the park up above. It's kind of a sloped piece of property, and from the football fields and the playfields.
So it's sort of, I guess, in a sense, designated green space for the city. They had no plans to be developing that?
None at this time.
What about hunting on this property, being as it will then be designated for school use? We should know whether to expect hunters on this property.
I can talk about that a little bit. Since it's currently city-owned land, that would preclude it from hunting anyway. But even other school forest land, like in the future, if there are additional school forest lands, the board has, the school board has complete control over whether hunting is allowed on those lands or not. So that's completely up to your discretion. It wouldn't apply here because it's in the city limits, except for, unless there's a city bow hunting season, I don't know.
So it's already a non-issue for us, basically?
I would assume so, since it's in city limits.
Okay, thank you.
That's something we'll just check out. Good question.
So, and Mr. President, one comment. So I imagine we'll just review this to make sure we have no legal exposure or anything. Mary from up, or Tim, right? So I'm assuming we'll do our due diligence before we sign anything.
Correct. Our goal tonight is to acquaint you with this issue, make sure we have your questions answered in preparation for approval at the next meeting.
And I have a comment too. Just accolade Cindy and team. Man, I'd love to see our faculty kind of doing these kind of things, just goes, just talks about the strength of our teachers. And I imagine you're not being paid to do this.
She's smiling.
No, I just, it's just, it's great to see. I mean, this is kind of the spirit that we need to carry forth in our district, and so I appreciate, you know, all the work that, Cindy hit me up on spin class a few times in this thing. I said I couldn't talk to her until it was a formal school board, so, so I'm just really, it just speaks well for, bodes well for our whole faculty, so.
I just think this is just spectacular, spectacular. We certainly benefit from Cindy's leadership, and her passion, and her expertise. Our students benefit every day from that. So do we.
Okay. I made a quick apology to Cindy at the Facilities Committee meeting because I saw it on the agenda before I came, and I thought it was going to be a presentation for an area maybe of a couple trees and some drainage area, but I truly, I went out and walked it over this weekend, and for the board members that look at the aerial map, it is a wonderful, wonderful piece of property, and it's just kind of a little hidden gem there that you don't even realize is there. So I, on the part of the board, I want to thank you, Cindy, for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
And thank the city for being willing to let us use this as an educational opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Move on, reports. I see you had for Dan Turnehoy. Shall we forego that?
No, I just, I know what Dan was going to talk about, so if you don't mind, I'll just step into that. You have the resolutions in your packet. Wish you would take some time to review those before the convention, the week of January 21st. And Erica Sherrier has agreed to be our delegate to the Delegate Assembly at the School Board Convention. So any comments that you have on those resolutions, please make sure that you communicate those to Erica.
All right, thank you, Mary. Any questions?
Is it Erica and Dan going, or just?
I'm Cindy.
But Erica would be a representative?
Correct. We have one representative to the Delegate Assembly.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move to reports real quickly. I'll give update on the facilities. Essentially, what you saw in front of you tonight for Rivercrest Sanitary Sewer Design Bid was forwarded to you. The underpass survey preliminary design for topo was forwarded to you. Construction update, we're moving right along. We continue to be on schedule. We're hitting a nice run of weather here, so that's a positive. We don't have a lot of wiggle room, but we're in good shape so far, on budget, on time. We talked about lead certification, i.e. parking, bicycle locations, bicycle parking. And one thing, Mary, I think is the site development. Are we going to approve this tonight? It really isn't an action item, is it?
No, and Dick is talking about the master plan for Rivercrest. That's part of the lead certification process. Certainly, it's a great planning tool for us, but we are going to bring it back to you at our next meeting with a number of other resolution that you need to approve as well, and it's going through the Facilities and Grounds Committee first, and then it'll come to you in February.
Then two other real quick things. We did have the presentation on the middle school forest, and then there is a meeting coming up, Jim Stasko, I believe, with Energy, Star Energy, or Focus on Energy.
Right, that's, yeah, that's already taken place, and they'll be preparing a report for the district.
Okay, and that, what that is, is really kind of a energy audit, energy study for the, for the district, the short-term things that we can do.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Holland, Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee met last Thursday. We had one agenda item, and that was the review of the audit report, which you all heard in detail tonight, so I won't go any further with that. And just note that, that that meeting was required because it was intended to be part of a regularly-scheduled Finance Committee earlier in the month, but wasn't ready, so that was the reason for, just the one agenda item, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tom. Mary, any, Diane, any citizens request to speak? No, no, okay, thank you. And any response to public comments from earlier? Mary?
I think we're good to go.
Good to go, all right. All right, then we're going to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, discussion of bargaining of teachers' contract and custodial contract. And we'll need a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we move to closed session.
Second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.